We're gonna start this meeting in a couple of minutes, so if you could be seated, I appreciate it. Thank you. Two thousand twenty-five is now six thirty-seven. Call to order. Determination of quorum. Mr. Kenny, Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Ray's.
Yeah.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
Mr. Price is excused tonight. Mr. Studley has recused himself from this application. Secretary Anderson. Vice Chair Colonian, Chairman Flynn. We have a quorum of seven tonight. Evacuation plan, the doors that you came in lead out to the front of the building. In a case of a real emergency, you can see all the exit signs, but use the back when you leave, please. Everybody could stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, we have approval of minutes, five point one, October twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Entertain a motion.
Hang on, on the minutes, I gotta.
Wait till discussion.
Oh.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to prove the minutes.
I have a motion by Mr. Kenny. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Colonian. Discussion.
Discussion, they just left my name out.
Okay, if you could add Kevin's Ray's name to the member present. Thank you, Kevin.
No, sorry about that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, before I start, I know there's a lot of people here that, for whatever reason, got very excited when we had the pre-application. If we could just respect each other, especially during the holidays, I would really appreciate that. This is a public hearing. Everybody will have a chance to talk. I mean, social media gets everybody wound up. Half of the stuff on it is not true. I've been beat up by emails for two weeks. You just can't take it to heart. We're here for you guys. We're gonna get through this, and please try to be respectful. Thank you very much. Okay, Village of Ty Oak. It is a public hearing tonight. Preliminary plan, major land development, comprehensive permit, owner applicant, two thirty-two Realty Associates, AP thirty-two lots, one forty-nine, one fifty, one fifty-one, fifty-three, one fifty-three Zona Twenty Residential, Ty Oak Avenue, East Shore Drive, Minglewood Drive and Tiffany Road. Applicant proposes to develop one hundred and seventy-six units comprised of mixed or single-family units, multifamily units on approximately twenty-seven acres of land as a comprehensive permit. A minimum of twenty-five percent proposed units must be deed restricted as affordable. Site access proposed from Ty Oak Avenue, Tiffany Road, East Shore Drive and Minglewood Drive, public water and sewer access to the development is anticipated. Is anybody here representing the applicant? Go ahead, name an address, please.
I'm little in the front. Good evening.
Excuse us, these lights, we really can't see anybody, so we're working on that.
Okay. Good evening. Joel Rocha, representing the property owner and the applicant today. As the chair said, we're here on a comprehensive permit application known as The Village at Ty Oak. Also stated, one hundred and seventy-six units are proposed, twenty-five percent of those are affordable. It's a mix of unit types. Also known as, this is a middle income project, and it allows, there's a mix of rental, homeownership, all different types of units within this development. As the board remembers, we were here for pre-app. In July, we received some comments. It was open to the public. We also received some public comments at that time. In between pre-application and the submission of preliminary plan, Dupree, as noted at the pre-app, worked, Dupree Engineering worked with the town to address some stormwater concerns, which was built into the, the project plans. And we're here tonight with both Dupree Engineering with respect to the civil design of the project and Crossman Engineering. I have to apologize because we just stumbled upon the staff report a couple hours ago. I am gonna address some stuff in there that was not sent to us. But we did see there was a recommended denial in that staff report. This is the first public hearing on this project. From the beginning, it was, there were conversations back and forth that this was gonna take some time, some meetings to get through. There's a lot of technical aspects, a lot of details, a lot we need planning board input on. There have been two TRCs, there have been some opinions there. We've responded at length to both the peer reviewer report. I don't know if the peer reviewer got our responses to kind of narrow, those issues, I believe, have been narrowed. And we've responded to various other comments. We will respond in depth to anything else in the staff report, not addressed tonight. In the context also of the public who are entitled to comment, their comments, planning board comments, this is not, I'm not standing in front of you saying, okay, can't wait for a vote at the end of tonight. There are certain things, this project hasn't even been certified complete, so I would suggest to you that any recommendation is not appropriate at this time. We've requested four waivers. And contrary to the staff report, we've provided why we need, why we've requested those waivers. The planning board has to vote on those waivers, I think as a threshold issue. Two of those waivers, we simply are asking to delay until we get some feedback from this board. We're not saying we're not providing these items. We're saying, give us some feedback and we will submit to you the item. Those two are first checklist item number thirty-five is a requirement for proposed location of permanent bounds and corner markers. We've also asked for an adjustment related to how many of those go in. The reason for the waiver is we haven't even discussed the design in front of the planning board, and that may very well change based on comments. So we're looking to get through that process and then provide you that information instead of giving revised plan after revised plan after revised plan. Similarly, checklist item number thirty-nine, requirement for proposed improvement, including streets, lots, lot lines, setback lines and curb cuts with lot areas and dimensions. For the same reason, we're here seeking feedback as to what the ultimate design may look like for this project. So again, we're seeking to not have submitted those at the outset, but at some point before you vote, we will provide you with that information once we, we have a discussion about design. There is one checklist item that we have asked to be deferred to final plan submission. And this was requested out of an abundance of caution. I don't, it's not a requirement for this type of application, but the requirement for the open space plan. Again, contingent on things may shift and that open space may shift. We, we certainly will provide you with a plan once we have, you know, all the units and what this, the roadways look like, things like that. So we've asked for it to be at final. We could do it before preliminary, but that is the request. The open space plan is actually in your regulations only required for cluster development, but we did add that as, just, just to be safe. And then the last one is a checklist item that we're asking to be completely waived, which is the requirement for notations of existing ground cover, any trees over fifty years old. And our response to that and all of these is in our November tenth, twenty twenty-five response to comments, which should be in your binders, or I guess they're bound, that we provided. And what we responded to that was that the existing conditions plan notes existing wooded areas and ground cover. The waiver is directed at any trees over fifty years old because of the vast amount of woodlands. To provide a notation of all trees over fifty years old is impracticable and will create an undue hardship. I'm summarizing what our rationale is, but those four waivers, especially the first couple, as to when we provide those first two, are really imperative for the planning board to weigh in, to actually vote up or down. That way, that's what's holding up the certificate of completeness on this project. So that's a threshold issue here. So, again, for the public's purpose, I know that the board knows this process. We're here at a very technical stage of review. We have submitted our state permits. We do not need those till final plan approval, but they have been submitted. The project also requires several adjustments, which are listed both in the submission letter and the project narrative. There are other items to discuss, which we can discuss later. There are statements in the staff report with respect to the landscape plan. It's not in the checklist. We said, again, we would provide one once we get some feedback from the board and we incorporate anything else that comes up at these hearings. The affordable housing plan, it's stated that we did not address it. That is in our initial submission in our cover letter. There's two other issues with respect to the integration of units that is in your plan set where we show where the units are gonna be. And then the requirement that, there's, there's two state law requirements with respect to the units. One is that the timing of construction, so essentially it's proportional, one out of every four building permits has to be, or COs has to be for an affordable unit. That's routinely a condition of final plan approval. We're not here asking for anything different. We understand that's the condition. And then the other condition on the size of the units, these are gonna be all different types of units. They have, the affordable have to be at least seventy-five percent of the size of the market rate. That's fine. We're not, again, seeking any relief from those conditions. We have big things to talk about. We have staff recommendation, peer review, what's gonna happen to the roads around, what does the traffic look like? Is there gonna be a connection? And we'll get into all those details tonight. Those are the things we really need feedback on. We don't, we aren't necessarily opposed to a connection. In fact, the peer reviewer said there's gonna be no detrimental impact on traffic if the roads are connected. If that's where the board wants to go, that we want to get in front and see if that's where the board wants to go. We did, we did, we do submit that if that's gonna be connected, that it be public because it was called out as a potential cut through for public traffic. So we'll get into the traffic when we get into the, but there are real items that we want feedback from the board on and we wanna hear from the public. So this process is not gonna conclude tonight, and we're here to, to get those comments. So I will turn, unless there are any questions for me yet, there, we also received, just to note this, some minor issues last night with respect to lighting and mailboxes. We'll address those as the process goes on. That's not, we don't see an issue with those, but we got it late last night, so we're not prepared for that today. But I will turn it over to.
I can make a clarification. I know you said we had two public hearings. We had a, we had a pre-application where we took comment.
Yeah, no, no, no.
I just wanted to be clear on it.
And if I, I misspoke, that's, I said two public hearings.
Under the new law, we used to have a master plan.
Right.
We do not anymore. It goes right to preliminary. So out of transparency, at the pre-application, we took public comment.
Yes.
So I just wanted to be clear. This is the first public meeting, public hearing.
Right.
Thank you.
Good evening. Certainly. My name is Leonard Bradley. My address is two Stafford Court, Cranston, Rhode Island. I am a registered professional engineer employed by Dupree Engineering, where I serve as one of the firm's principal. I am registered in Rhode Island in Massachusetts and been practicing throughout those, you know, communities for well over thirty years. I testified before this board in the past, maybe not your actual gentleman, but I have been doing work in coventry throughout most of my professional career. So my testimony tonight is gonna focus on the civil engineering aspect of the development, which will include, you know, the roadway layout, sewer, water, drainage, grading, anything to do with traffic will be by Mr. Paul Bannon from Crossman, so I won't be answering any questions on traffic. Which I think Mr. Chevlin from Paw will be happy about. So, and as I go through it, my presentation, you know, please feel free to ask any questions. So whenever we develop projects of this nature, we work with a team of professionals to create what we think is a great development, which and the team members typically include, you know, us as engineers, we have land surveyors, land planners, architects, and of course, the builder. And as Ms. Rocha said, we really value the input from the community and municipality. Doug, are there slides for our presentation?
When you ask if there are slides, do you want your site plan available?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can make that available.
Yeah, be great if you could call that up. So what I can do is, as the site plan is projected, and I presume you have plans in front of you, kind of walk, walk you through the sheet set and describe, you know, describe our design. And I'm not sure if it's easy, if, I don't know who has the mouse, if it's easy for me to control it. That is the right plan. I can just tell you what sheet to go to if that's easiest. I would start off on sheet, so sheets one, two, three are essentially general notes. Why don't we start off on sheet two, which is the aerial, and gives a vicinity of where this property lies. And I just wait for all the board members to have the plans in front of you. If you just give me a thumbs up that you're, you're ready, I'll start. Thank you. If I talk too fast, just tell me to slow down. So, thank you. So sheet two is an aerial view of the property. It's demarcated in blue. The yellow line is a set radius, it's probably a half mile radius off of the boundary line, and it shows where the site's situated, which is on the south side of Ty Oak Gav and to the east of Ty Oak Lake. And if we can go to sheet four. So sheets, sheets four and five and six, I believe, are our boundary survey. So whenever we start a project, and as you're probably aware, you know, Rhode Island state law, we usually don't do a boundary at master plan, but at preliminary plan, we absolutely will. And being, that's the stage we're at. These sheets depict a detailed boundary survey of the subject property, and it also shows existing conditions such as buildings that are adjacent or on the site, topography, you know, such as the condo lines, wetlands, et cetera. So I'm gonna just skip through those, and if you have any questions, just give me a yell. So we go to sheet eight of the set, please. So this is a great sheet to kind of get your orientation of the development. As, as you could see from the aerial photo, this is a long skinny parcel of land, and that we've laid the development out in essentially three different sections. So the first section, which has access right off of Ty Oak Avenue, is laid out as, you know, a private road, zero lot lines or no lot lines, and, you know, condominium buildings with, you know, multiple units per building, you know, anywhere from, from five to six units. And that's the top half of the sheet that you're looking at. As you look at the bottom half of the sheet, the development, you know, changes a bit where the, the section, which is in the middle of the property on the bottom right side of the sheet, is again a condominium style development with single, single-family detached condos. No lot lines proposed other than possibly for the right of way, if for some reason that goes to be a public right of way. And then the last section, which is on the southernmost portion of the site, is the typical subdivision, single-family lot layout. And again, you know, there are lot lines around each of the, the units and proposed right of way, which could be either public or private, depending on what the town would like. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick on this sheet for a minute and kind of talk more about the site. So the, the total area that we're working with is twenty-seven acres. And as you can see from this sheet and from the aerial, we have frontage on multiple roads. I already mentioned Ty Oak Gav, but we also have access from East Shore Drive, Minglewood Drive and Tiffany. And Tiffany's on the southernmost. Minglewood Drive and Tiffany, and Tiffany's on the southernmost, uh, terminus of our property. The development is primarily surrounded by, uh, single family homes, some small commercial uses. Uh, there's a, there's a couple, uh, multi-family affordable housing complexes. And of course you got the school to the, to the west of the site. The subject property is zoned R twenty, which, uh, under conventional development, we require twenty thousand square foot uh, per each lot. Uh, a lot of the nearby development, uh, with, you know, consistent of the homes, uh, have much smaller lots than that and a much higher density, which was typical of developments that were done back in the fifties and sixties. The other thing that's important to note is that this, uh, property lies within the, the state designated urban service boundary, uh, which is encouraging, you know, growth in the area, especially where it's serviced by public sewer and water. So is, uh, if you look at the topography of the site, which is shown on the, the previous survey, there's, you know, the site is, you know, typical Rhode Island, New England, uh, topography with rolling slopes. And the elevation of the, the, the site ranges from a low of two twenty-six to a high of two eighty-four feet, and that's above mean sea level. Uh, there is a single family home that currently is, sits on the site out towards Ty O'Gav. And there are no actual biological wetlands on our site, uh, although there are, uh, there, there is a wetland buffer that encroaches into the property at the southwest, uh, portion of the site. So what are we proposing here? We're proposing a hundred and seventy-six unit, uh, community featuring the three housing types I talked about earlier, uh, where we have the single family attached units. Uh, and those will be a typical two-story unit with attached garages and two and three bedrooms approximately, uh, fourteen hundred square feet, and there are fifty-eight of those proposed. Uh, and that is, uh, the southern side of the, uh, of the property. The next type of development is what we're calling the single family cottages. These are one and two-story units with porches, two and three-bedroom units. Uh, and they're about sixteen hundred square feet, uh, finished plus eight hundred square foot basement, and there are fifty-seven of those units. And the last section is a single family, uh, detached units. Those are one and two-story, uh, homes ranging between a thousand and two thousand square feet and, uh, designed for, you know, the units can be designed for future expansion. There are sixty-one of those types of units. So one of the things that we did when we laid out this development, uh, is we worked hard at trying to preserve some of the existing trees and, and natural buffers, uh, that are along our boundary like, boundary in between the different developments proposed. And, you know, we're trying to promote, uh, you know, preservation and, and, and natural buffers to separate the units and the units from the, uh, adj- adjacent developments. Uh, the roadway designs that we're proposing are, uh, proposed for narrower pavement widths uh, and Cape Cod bituminous style berm instead of concrete curb. And we're proposing sidewalks only on one side in certain areas to reduce uh, construction costs and impervious surface. So there's, there's benefits, uh, from a stormwater perspective with keeping your pavement widths down and keeping your impervious surfaces, uh, in hardscape, you know, down. It, you know, reduces the amount of stormwater runoff, uh, reduces the maintenance. You know, the narrower pavements, and Mr. Bannon can speak to this when, uh, he discusses traffic, uh, acts as traffic calming, you know, the, the curvature of the roads, the layout helps, you know, keep cars from excessive speeds. So there's, there's a lot of benefits, uh, to the way we've laid out the, the site. So one of the things in this, and I'm not going to get into this too much because Ms. Rocha already talked about, but we did ask for, um, some, some variances for the lot sizes. Uh, instead of having twenty thousand square foot lots, uh, we're requesting five thousand square foot lots and reduce setbacks uh, for, for frontage. Uh, the five thousand square foot lots are feasible because we have the public sewer and public water. We don't need the, the, the land area for septic and wells. Um, and the five thousand is very similar to the, you know, the existing surrounding density of those, those older subdivisions. Uh, at this point, I'm going to start talking about the stormwater. This is probably where I'll spend quite a bit of my, uh, time discussing. And if I could ask you to flip forward to the grading and utility plans, which should be after, let's see, on sheet eight, if you, maybe try, try sheet eleven. Perfect. So this, this depicts, um, yeah, that's, that's it. Um, so this depicts a southerly section of the development. Um, this proposes access off of Tiffany. We're proposing improvements to Tiffany adjacent to the property, uh, you know, repaving and widening of the pavement as well as some drainage improvements. Um, and, and this plan shows a lot of information. It is busy. Uh, and I'll, I'll kind of walk through. Um, and I know I said I was going to talk about drainage, but I'll, I'll touch on some of the other utilities. So the, the drainage that we're proposing for the site is your, your typical stormwater network. We have, you know, series of catch basins that are connected to manholes. Uh, and that, that network of drainage pipes will direct the stormwater to various, uh, portions of the development. So we're proposing multiple, uh, drainage basins throughout the development, which have been designed in accordance with the state of Rhode Island Stormwater Manual. So there's a drainage basin that we're proposing, uh, at the southwest corner of the property adjacent to Tiffany. Um, and you'll see that at that location, we're also picking that water up once it, you know, we kind of run it through the basin. There's infiltration of the stormwater that happens there. The excess flow will actually, uh, flow into the drainage pipe, which is depicted as a purple line. And that runs essentially along the boundary line behind the single family homes that are proposed into a bigger drainage network, and that's located in the top right corner of your sheet. And you'll see water quality, uh, features, water quality basins that will basically, uh, filter the stormwater, hold the storm, stormwater and release the stormwater. And that stormwater is going to be directed to an off-site wetland, which eventually, uh, well, it's not eventually, that stormwater wetland is connected to Ty, uh, Ty O'Glake. Uh, so we have a good amount of our site stormwater coming to the central stormwater system and, uh, being mitigated and treated and, uh, discharged uh, to that wetland. And you can see the wetland, you can see the edge of it. It's a heavier line with triangles and, and a, a letter numeric combination that depicts a wetland flag and kind of the, the wetland itself is a grayed out area. There's a green line, uh, that's offset from that wetland edge, which is a seventy-five foot buffer, uh, as determined by D E M. So any work within that buffer, um, or adjacent to it requires a permit. And that, we've applied for that permit with D E M. Um, we've got, uh, technical comments from D E M. We've, uh, resubmitted back to D E M, and I would expect a permit in hand from D E M, uh, by the end of the year. Uh, so the, the purple lines throughout the development depict the drainage. So you'll see the standard, you know, standard catch basins and manholes throughout the street layout that picks up all the stormwater, uh, from the roadways and discharges to that drainage system I, I discussed earlier. We also have a number of the proposed homes where the roof drainage will be directly connected into that drainage system as well. And again, that's picking up, you know, any storm, any rainfall that hits the roofs, it will pick it up and treat that water and mitigate that water as well. And then any of the homes that are in the interior, you know, those will have your standard downspouts and, and that water will flow overland into the drainage network in the street and subsequently into that same trunk line that runs up into the drainage basins. And then there are several homes throughout the development where we can't, uh, get the roof runoff into, into the hard pipe drainage system because of grades. So in those areas, we're doing, uh, dry well systems, uh, to infiltrate the, the rooftop runoff into the ground. What you also see on this sheet is the sewer lines that are proposed for the development. And while I'm on that sheet, I will talk about that, uh, the sewer layout. So as typical, you know, with the proposed roadway, we have sewer running generally down the middle of the road. Um, because of the slopes of this property, uh, we have a series of gravity sewer lines and then pressurized sewer lines. So there are going to be several homes that are going to be on individual sewer pumps. Uh, and then the sewer for this development, this specific layout that we're looking at is going to gravity down to a sewer pump station that's proposed between this development, I'll call this a south development and the central development. There'll be a common sewer pump station there that picks up sewage from both of those and pumps it, uh, uh, off, off-site into the town sewer system. Uh, and you also see the water line shown here as well, uh, which is demarcated in a blue line. And, you know, that, that's been designed in accordance with Kent County Water Standards. Uh, you know, the water line is offset from the sewer, uh, in accordance with, you know, both Kent County and the state's requirements. The, the water line is, uh, linked, uh, linked or looped into the central development. And these plans have been submitted to Kent County Water. And we've received approval from Kent County Water for this design. Uh, if I could ask you to go to sheet ten, so I'm going to go back one. So this is a central portion of the site. Um, so this basically, you know, the line, the line color, uh, schematic is, is the same. The purple reflects the drainage. Uh, the green is the sewer and blue is the water. And you can see, uh, that there's essentially what looks, well, an easement between the, the southern development and the central development that connects, uh, that the water line runs through and connects the two developments. And you can see, much like the sou- southern development, the central development, there's a stormwater line on the west side of the units that picks up all the stormwater from the development uh, and, and runs it into that extensive drainage system I was talking about. And like the other, the other, other development, uh, the southern development, we have a combination of, you know, some of the rooftops directly connected to the drainage line, some of the units, uh, our sheet flowing into the street system, the roofs. And then, uh, there may be, and it's hard for me to see from here, uh, there, there may be some rooftop runoff uh, that's infiltrated on site. Um, there is also some drainage that runs down to Minglewood uh, and ties into the existing drainage system. Uh, and there's a second drainage basin, uh, which would be at the northeast corner of this development or looking at the sheet on the bottom right corner, kind of hatched in that purple is another basin there. This sheet shows where we're ultimately also connecting into our sewer. There's a sewer manhole, uh, at the intersection of Minglewood and the, uh, proposed road. And that's where we are making our connection point. And, uh, the sewer pump station that I talked about earlier is depicted on this sheet as well. It's at the, the, I'll, looking at the sheets on the top left, uh, where the green, the green lines kind of do what I'll call a dog leg turn. So, and, and then the water line continues and loops through to East Shore, uh, as well. So it, so this style, um, actually, I'm, I'm done on this sheet. So why don't we go to sheet, uh, sheet ten, uh, nine, please, which is the previous sheet. So this is the development that's closest to Ty O'Gav. It's a denser development. Um, this kind of sits on its own as far as, uh, drainage, sewer and water. You can see there's a drainage basin located, uh, adjacent to Ty O'Gav at the northeast corner of the site. This picks up the rooftops from the proposed buildings as well as the road and, uh, treats the stormwater in accordance with the state's requirements and ultimately, uh, infiltrates back into the ground. Uh, and there is an emergency overflow that ties into the, the D O T's drainage system. Uh, the sewer here, uh, actually, uh, runs down into a pump station, which is proposed uh, at the intersection of Ty O'Gav and the new, the, the new proposed road. Um, and then the, the sewage is pumped back uphill and, and connects into an existing sewer manhole, kind of at the pinch point of the property, which on this sheet is on the leftmost side of the sheet and ties in. Um, it's important to note that, uh, the project has received approval from town council for connecting of the sewer. Uh, so as a, you know, between Kent County and the town, both water and sewer are approved. We actually have approval from D O T, uh, for access of this road uh, to the state road as Ty O'Gav is a state road. And the, the one permit that we're still waiting for, and I touched on this earlier, was the D E M permit uh, for the wetlands. And as there are no wetlands on the site, it's not so much a biological review. It's really more reviewing the, the stormwater. Uh, and we, like I said, we've already addressed their comments. We're just waiting for the permit. So let's see if there's anything else I want to cover. I know that was a riveting testimony. You know, if you taped it, it could help you probably go to sleep at night. Um, so, you know, we've, we have submitted, um, you know, to the town as well, to D E M, a, a stormwater report, which details a lot of what I just talked about, uh, and has a lot of the, the, the existing flows and the proposed flows. And we're aware that there are some drainage problems that exist out here today, that there's some, there's some flooding of neighbors. Um, and one of the things that we've done, uh, as part of our, our design, uh, and you can see this where we, we have a comparison table in the stormwater report, where we look at the flow, which is measured in cubic feet per second. And we've also looked at the volume, which is measured in acre feet. And we've reduced both flow and volume of stormwater that leaves our site, uh, in the specific areas where there's some drainage issues. And we're pushing that water, uh, to Ty O'Glake. You know, of course it's being treated first. But the impact to the lake, and it's really a volume impact, is really negligible. It will not change the elevation of the lake. And D E M is, you know, reviewing that as part of the application. But, you know, understanding that there are some flooding issues in the area, um, it's, it's not our obligation to, to fix that. We didn't create the problem. We can't exacerbate it, but we have, our client has asked us to look at what we can do to help relieve some of that. So we have overdesigned, uh, some of the drainage system to handle that. And as I said, we're, we're picking up a lot of the stormwater that flows offsite. And we're directing it to the pond where it can, uh, adequately, uh, store that water without i- impact. The other thing I wanted to note, um, looking at my notes here, is the fire hydrant locations we've shown in the plans. Uh, and, and water service locations have been approved by Coventry Fire as well. Talking about, uh, let's talk about the roadway design- Talking about, let's talk about the roadway design a little more, lighting for the development. We will have lighting that will be installed for, for safety. And we'll, you know, the lighting will be shielded to direct it where it needs to be, away from environmentally sensitive areas and neighboring properties. And I think that is it from a technical perspective. And I'd be more than happy to answer questions that the board may have. Yeah, I think our town engineer is pretty much satisfied with this, but certainly I'm not a stormwater engineer. Does anybody on the board have any questions for the engineer? Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, I have one question, and then I'm going to ask you maybe to just go back and clarify a few things. You said the town council approved the sewer tie-in?
Yes.
Is that the only approval you need? I mean, as far as capacity in West Warwick?
The sewer?
Yeah. In other words, is it a done deal? You can tie into the sewer with all these units?
That's my understanding. Yeah, I mean, so typically, there's, there's kind of two, two steps to both, I'll say, water and sewer approvals. There's one is availability, there's a service available. And a lot of times typically we do that at master plan and we get a letter from the authority that says, yes, it's approved. And then the next step is the technical, which is the design, the design of our system and how it meets standard and how it connects. So my understanding, and Ms. Rocha can correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, I have a memo from, from.
I just, West Warwick controls the capacity and I just want to make sure that you don't have any other approvals that are required. You have it from West Warwick as well?
I think as long as it's residential and the town has, and we were just talking about this today. I think they have 200, 2.5 million gallons allocated and we're within that allocation.
Okay.
So I don't, we don't need to go, need to go to West Warwick.
I just wanted to make, I just wanted to make sure. And the other thing I think would be helpful, Len. We looked at the sheet eight and there were three separate areas shown and you kind of touched on each one. I think what might be helpful, at least to me and maybe to the audience, would be to like, look at each one of these areas and give us an overview on what you envision the lot sizes to be, the buildings to be. I know you kind of mentioned, we're going to do this, we're gonna, you know, there were three different types, but I don't think they were articulated with relation to each one of these separate sheets, nine, 10 and 11. So I can gauge, like, from the initial part of the presentation, when you said 5,000 square foot lots, I didn't realize, those are actually the largest lots, I think, on the southern portion off of Tiffany Road. And, and I can't see any lot lines at all on, on the other.
Correct.
On the other ones. So maybe if we could just very briefly say, sheet nine, what do we expect the typical size of these dwellings to be? And are they going to be on individual lots or is this?
Yeah, great.
Condo?
Yeah, great question. So I did kind of go through that fast. So the front development, which is the multi-unit, you know, there are five unit and six unit attached.
Which sheet? So he can put it?
So, yeah, why don't we, yeah.
Nine? You want to start with nine?
Yeah, let's start with nine because. So. I try to be sophisticated and use my tablet, but that, I can't see it unfortunately. So. So I'm doing the Mr. Magoo style with my big boards.
That's okay.
So, yeah, so sheet nine is, there are no lot lines proposed. This is going to be one lot, it'll be a condominium, condominium style ownership.
Yeah. And then how many, how many units?
So this has, yeah, let me get my, my cheap sheet in front of me.
It looks like from 119 to 170.
Correct.
If we do that math.
Correct.
So that would be fifty, fifty-eight.
Six.
Fifty-eight in area one?
That's 58 units. So that was the first style unit I, I described, the single family attached units. Those are the two.
Okay.
And these are rentals. So these are also rentals, they're not for sale.
They're all rentals?
Yeah. I was just.
And are they a two-story townhouse style?
Yeah, two-story townhouse with attached garages. So the little bump outs you see, and actually the driveway goes right up to them.
Integral?
Those would be your garages. And those will be, you know, two and three bedroom, the size of those is 1,400 square feet.
Okay, so they'll have a homeowners association?
There'll be a homeowners association that would maintain sewer, water, drainage, the roadway. You know, the outside of the units.
Yep. And where do we envision the boundaries for the homeowners association to be? Will it include the cemetery?
Yeah, so that, that's not 100% worked out yet, but we are showing where the cemetery, as you can see the black line. You know, that would be an anticipated boundary line. There's likely going to be at least two, if not three homeowners, different homeowners associations. One for this one, one for the central, one for the third. So that would be the boundary line and we do that as part, once, when we get to the end of this, there'd be a subdivision plan that we, we would create these lots and then there'd be condominium documents.
Well, I was, right, but I was trying to gauge for our purposes, like where does one association begin and one end? And that might go to some of the things that were, were in the staff report. But just to clarify, some, one of the homeowners associations is going to own that cemetery and provide access to the public?
Right. Yeah. So, yeah, individual owner of the units will not own it. It would be the homeowners association that will own it.
I just don't see any provision for physical access, at least on this plan.
Yeah, I mean, they'll, they'll have the right that they can come in, just like do, do today. They can come in off of east shore, down that easement. You know, the state law is very loose on the cemeteries, other than that they have access to go in there and maintain it and.
Not gonna have.
Yeah, so.
The homeowners aren't going to want them using their road. And I can see someone trudging through 600 feet of woods to get to it from the other side. Doesn't seem practical either.
Well, and that's what they do today.
Stick a pin in that.
We can stick a pin in it. We're amenable to.
I just was, again, I, my, 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 the purpose in this was just to go through the sheets individually. So the first area basically is your typical condominium townhouses and they're going to be rentals.
Yes.
Okay.
So sheet 10 is, which is the central section. This is what we're calling the single family cottages. Again, no lot lines. This would be one lot, the condominium, homeowners association. So from the boundary, from the first development we just looked at, and we, you'll see there's, there's a line that kind of, between the, the two cul-de-sacs on the left side of the sheet that shows where that boundary would be. So no lot lines. But we are showing a right of way for the road, should the road become public. If it's private, it's, in my opinion, moot, but.
Yeah, if it's public. And what's the proposed width as it's drawn right now?
This roadway?
Yeah.
Go to the detail sheet for that. It's probably 24 feet. That's what we typically design at. I just got a flip to feel cheap.
Yeah.
Yeah, so sheet eight has all the proposed roadway dimensions. And that, all, all the roads are proposed at 24 foot width.
Okay. And if it be, if that was to become public and connect, I guess we can revisit that, but I, I just think that's a little narrow, especially if these folks are trying to run a condominium association and it becomes accessible to the public. But at this point, I was just trying to nail that down. And what's the typical size of these units?
So these units are a combination one and two-story units with the front porch, as I mentioned earlier, they're 1,600 square feet. They're two to three bedroom and there'd be 800 square feet of basement unfinished.
Okay. So the footprint is 800 square feet. And in this section, there were?
So this has 57 units.
Okay. And then we just go to sheet 11.
So sheet 11 is more of your standard style of subdivision. And, and this is where we're asking for the smaller lot sizes, so we can increase the density. And this, you know, this sized lot is, you know, not necessarily consistent with director butters. But if you look at the overall vicinity of this portion of town around Lake Tai O, a lot of the lots are small of this nature. And frankly, and this is one of my pet peeves in our state is if you have, if you have public water and public sewer available, you know, 5,000 square feet is, is more than enough. And, and that's why, what we're asking for here.
And it looks like there's a variation. I just don't want to say they're all, some 5,000.
Some may be a little bigger.
You've got some that go typically six, seven, and then there's one that's nine. So I see that. And the, in the, in the size of the dwellings in this area?
And these, these are basically one and two-story homes ranging between, you know, 1,000 and 2,000 square feet. A number of them can be designed for future expansion if they want to do additions off the back or the sides. These all have garages and there's 61 of these.
And will there be deed restrictions in this, in this area? And I, I, I don't want to put you on the spot, so let me just tell you why I'm asking the question. When you got 5,000 square foot lots and 1 to 2,000 square foot dwellings, it just doesn't come with one car. Sometimes there's two, sometimes there's a boat, sometimes there's a utility trailer. And quite frankly, I'm not sure these lots are big enough for all that, unless you're going to have a very unsightly development. And I'm just throwing that out there for, for consideration.
Good, good, good point. I'm sure that's something that as they draw up, there'll be a homeowners association for this development as well. That I'm sure that they will draw up, you know, guidelines for what can and cannot happen. I agree, if someone had a big ugly boat next to me that was, and I saw, I wouldn't be happy about that. So I'm sure that those are things they'll look at and prohibit certain nuisances like that accordingly.
And, and even family sizes, you know, sometimes next thing you know, they stay there, they, they raise their family and, and you know, college is expensive, so now we got a third car.
Yeah, I, I would imagine, and I don't want to speak for the developer, but what I've seen in the past is if there is a potential for expansion, you know, those lots will be designated as part of the sales, you know, program. And that there's probably a limit on how big you can go.
Well, I meant as far as vehicle parking, if the road widths are 24, you can't really park in the street. And if the driveways only hold two cars, you know, that's where the 5,000 square foot lot becomes a problem.
Well, in most of these, you have parking within the garage. So on the, the two-car garages, you could get easily four cars, two cars in and two cars out. There are some single stall driveways that, you know, those would be the smaller, smaller buildings, you'd only have two. But yeah, I.
There's certainly ways you can solve it, but I'm really bringing it up because if you go into some of the cluster developments that were built in the eighties with 10,000 square foot lots, right now, they have two cars in the driveway. They don't want to block either one in, so there's two more cars in the street.
Yep.
And garbage trucks, snowplows, buses, cars passing each other.
Company.
Yeah, yep.
I get you.
That's all. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a quick question. Area one, where it shows the cul-de-sac with the underground infiltration?
Yes.
System?
Yes.
In that cul-de-sac, there, I don't see any manholes or anything to catch water within the cul-de-sac. Is that impermeable pavement?
No, if, if you look at the profile of that cul-de-sac, it slopes towards Tai O Gav. So that water would all be, I'm just trying to turn to that plan. That water would basically flow down the roadway towards.
Oh, towards those two.
Yeah, so, yeah, by units 137 and 163.
Yep.
Those two catch basins will pick that stormwater up.
Okay. I was just wondering.
Yeah, and that underground infiltration area is really meant to handle the units that are, that are around that cul-de-sac. It's really not taking any of this, any of the road stormwater.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I have one quick question on the sewage.
Yes.
Where is it eventually ending up? Is it ending up in the main line on the London Turnpike?
That is a great question. I do not have the answer to that.
I know some of the lines are being under review. That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, we tie into Minglewood.
Where does it eventually go to West Warwick?
Yeah, I'd have to get back to you on that. We'll have to, we'll have to look at that.
Because I know a lot of those lines, we have the, the capacity.
Yeah.
But a lot of those lines cannot take the volume.
Right.
So I want to make sure that this is clear. Do you have the volume to access those lines?
Yeah, I mean, I, I have it on my tablet. I have the West Warwick, I have the Coventry Town Council approval letter. So I presume that they have given that approval, the capacity's there.
I know the capacity's there, but that doesn't mean the line can take the volume.
Well, I guess.
That's two different things. And I just want to ask that question because we have so much development.
Yeah.
Going on in that area, that that line on the London Turnpike, I believe is being reviewed.
Right. Well, what I would tell you, and Ms. Rocha can speak to this more, but if we're getting an approval for connecting the sewer, our, our belief is that the sewer from where we're connecting, going all the way to the plant in West Warwick, there's no issues for us.
Okay.
That's, that's the industry standard. I've never seen it where like, yeah, you can connect. And typically what would happen is if there are issues with the line between point A and point B, I've seen the sewer authority or the town say, hey, there's a sewer main, sewer line here that's clogged and needs to be fixed. Or there's a break and needs to be fixed, or, or the size has to be upgraded. And there's a collaboration and that gets repaired as part of that. So that didn't come up to my knowledge.
Yeah. So the only thing I can add is the correspondence leading up to your town engineer's review before the town council was the study that Tai Oak line. So my guess is it's there, but we're, we'll pull everything that was submitted to the council just for clarification purposes and let you know.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else on the board?
Hey, Len, is there, is there history of this underground infiltration systems and other developments here in Coventry?
Yeah, well, we've been, I've been designing for my whole career. It's a, it's a standard acceptable practice. There's a lot of studying that we do. We look at the soils, the groundwater table. And it is a standard practice. It's approved, you know, it's been approved in town before. It's been approved by DM many times.
So we use it in this town? I, I just don't remember anything coming. Okay. I guess my question, how like, I understand any water tables? Have we seen a water table in this area? And the reason I'm asking is that, how deep is that underground infiltration? And will that mess with even the, not the abudders water table, you know? I mean, silly question. It's an engineering question, I guess, but.
So we do show, if you look at the, the, the boundary and topo sheets, we do show all the test holes that we did. And.
Seems like it was only went down four feet though. I mean, I don't know.
We've got, you know, like in the area of where that cul-de-sac is, groundwater table, we never hit it. We, we went down 10 feet and never hit the groundwater. So it was greater than 10 feet.
And that infiltration system underground, how, what is the depth on that?
For that specific system, they vary. The, the depth of the actual system?
Yeah, yeah, and.
So you, so sheets and it's usually towards the end of the set. So let me.
Yeah, I went, I think it was sheet 12. I just couldn't, I just couldn't find it. You know, my mind's doing calculations that I can't handle, but.
I'm an engineer and I can't do calculations in my mind either. I have to pull out my, my calculator. So.
Yeah, 19.
Yeah, so that's this, so we're proposing a storm tech unit, which it's, that's a basically a plastic unit. The depth of the actual unit is 33 inches. And then we got six inches of stone. So like, you know, say 40 inches. And then we have, you know, the cover varies, but we have a minimum of six inches of crushed stone over the top. So there's actually a table, so that, I'm just going to go to the top of the systems. The table or the top of the stone is elevation. Uh, the table uh or the top of the stone is elevation for s- for G, which is the one in the cul-de-sac. Uh. The top of the stone is elevation two fifty two point seven five. The grade uh of the cul-de-sac is a two fifty four. So, you know, I'm roughly a foot of cover and it's going to vary because this cul-de-sac is sloping, that unit's flat. And then if, you know, we've got, you know, we put a seasonal high groundwater table at it's, it's less than two forty five. So in the bottom of the system is at two forty nine. So we've got four feet of separation was in, it exceeds the state's requirements for separation to groundwater. We didn't hit the groundwater, so groundwater could be down twenty feet.
Right.
Could be down thirty feet.
At that point, sure.
So, so that's, that's typically when we're designing these systems, you know, the important things that we look for is what the soil is like. You know, i- if it's clay, we typically try avoid infiltrating in that because it's just going to be a sponge. But if it's sandy gravel, you know, even if, even if there's a little bit of silt in it, it's okay. DM gives us permeability rates that they want us to use. So we use those rates to design the the, how much water flows out. Then we look at things such as the depth of groundwater. DM stipulates what the minimum depth separation is. And then also vertical, I'm sorry, horizontal separation, like if there was a septic system or someone's drinking water well. Uh, or wetlands, some of, and none of that applies. There's no septics, there's no wells, there's no wetlands. So then it really becomes, we want to make sure there's enough separation for building foundations because we don't want water leaching in. But the way, also the way to look at it is what's what's filling these basins is rainwater, which is falling anyways. And what we're trying to do is just get it back into the ground where where it belongs. And typically, if you look at how that water flows, it's almost like an inverted bell curve. It comes down and then flattens out. Um, so the question with impacting neighbors, I wouldn't expect any here.
Right, that was, that's so much the development, but the abudders and the existing neighbors.
Yeah, that's, there, we, we, be no impact to them.
And the other concern, uh, what I noticed was it seems like uh phase three, uh, phase three. Uh, where you have the the big uh catch basin at the end near Tiffany. It seems like that elevation. The elevations are so close, it seems like you're running a good, I don't know, what is that, a fi- quarter mile down the road to it, to almost the same height? I I don't know how you would pipe that to the point where if that pond fills up, we're going to be just stagnant water.
Yeah.
It seems like there's only like a three, two foot difference from one end to the other.
Right, and and that's why we have that, we have a pipe taking that water out of that basin. Once it fills up, it will take that and it will infiltrate into the ground as well.
It will, right. You you got the perforated pipe taking it and by the time it gets to the other, which is looks, appears to be only like four feet higher, way down the other end near, near section two.
Yeah, and that's, you know. So one of the things that you, in 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 my peers in the office, Brenna G Y Gay, she, she signed and stamped this as a professional engineer. Her team working with me did all these calculations to make sure this is going to work.
Right.
So um, I'm a hundred percent confident in it and this, this is what we do every day. The pipes. When we dra- design drainage pipes, a lot of times it's like half percent slope, so it's almost flat.
Right.
There's enough to move the water through. Um, and what we're trying to do with the the Tiffany is, right now, it's an old, you know, older town road. Um. There's no storm water, so we're trying to improve our section. And by widening that, we want to pick up that water so we're not flooding anyone over there. And and that is what really that little basin is for.
Okay, and then the topography, I guess you got section two and section three, it looks like it's all running down into its own pond area, right?
Look at the profiles, you can see the roads.
Right, I think it's um, I think it's in um it's in B, uh, pond complex B. So all the water off of these two little sections are dumping into that one area.
Yeah, that that larger area next to the wetland.
Right, and then I know we're calculated for a hundred year flood and everything else, but where would, the water would what continue down towards g- g- God forbid, if can, it'll, that doesn't hurt, it would continue down towards uh Taiyoke and uh and uh East and East Road. I don't know, it's just a lot of water. So the reason I bring this up, Len, is only because we've heard testimonies, you know, several times and we've just seen different results. And uh, experts and science tells us one thing and we, and we, in the end, we see different results. So I just want the explanation to be, you know, uh dumbed down to uh to me and to everyone that's listening that everything is going, we're doing everything we can to prevent this and and we, I've heard sometimes they, they, we improve on it, right? We, we hear that this is, the development is actually improving on the, on the rainwater flow.
And and that's what I said earlier is that there's known flooding issues, you know, in in this area. And that's why we're trying to direct, and maybe if you, you can go to sheet um, sheet eleven of the set. So this is why I was, I was talking about this earlier, that there's a large drainage basin shown. Um, and it's, it's pretty significant in size.
That one?
Uh.
Not this one.
That's looking at the sheet, it's at the top right. That's a big detention basin, it's the low area. It's adjacent to a wetland that's adjacent to Taiyo Lake, which is a massive water body.
The surface runoff.
And we're direct, we're trying to direct as much of this water to that location as we can. Um. You know, so so it's not running out to Taiyo.
Right.
I mean, there will be some.
Right.
You know, um, but all our roads, you know, on this southern section and the central section. All the roads, all the houses are either running to here or being infiltrated. You know, so we're doing our best to really capture, you know, as much as we can, treat it. I mean, in in the way that DM likes to, likes us to, wants us to do this is if let's say, and I'm, you know, I'm going to get a little technical. You got, you know, those ten homes around the south, the east side of our site on the, for the bottom sheet. If that was a wetland today, and let's say under pre-development conditions, there was ten cubic feet of flow and, you know, fifty acre feet. I have to keep the same amount of flow going there. I can't decrease it because they don't want you to dry up the wetland. All right, but I can't increase it either because they don't want me flood out the island. So it's a balancing act. In this case here, because we had Taiyo Lake, which if we put an extra ten acre feet in there. And you look at, well, what does that do to the elevation of the lake? It may be like an eighth of an inch, which is negligible when it comes, so. We have an opportunity here to really try to help this neighborhood and and design a project that won't have an impact on on that flooding. It will help that flooding.
Yep, that's the goal and.
Yeah. And your town engineer, I mean, uh, you know, I'm saying he's reviewed it.
I saw it.
You know, and we're going to get a permit from DM, so you're going to have two, two qualified bodies. You know, saying, yeah, they're in agreement with our approach.
Lot of maintenance with that uh underground infiltration system?
No, because um the, the one in that sent, in the cul-de-sac, that's just rooftop. There's no road going, it's just rooftop, so um, you know, typically has to be inspected, you know, uh, a couple of times a year.
Who's responsible for that in this?
The homeowners association would be.
All right.
So, um. You know, typically, what I'll, I'll be honest, in this, having a homeowners association is the best case scenario because sometimes, and it's not, doesn't happen so much these days, but you know, developments that were done in the eighties and nineties where maybe there wasn't a homeowners association, it was just an easement. I have, a friend of mine has a, has a home in Cumberland, has a drainage basin on his property. He didn't know he had to maintain it. And now he's got to spend twenty thousand dollars to clean it up. You're not seeing those things happen that much anymore. So as long as you're staying on top of the maintenance and it's being done, you know, it's like a septic. You know, if you don't put anything in there, it doesn't belong there. If you pump it every couple of years, you shouldn't have an issue.
Sure, and that goes along with that perforated pipe that you're going to put from six, you know, from phase three down to.
Yeah, it won't be perforated, it'd be, a lot of it will be solid.
Okay.
Usually it's solid pipe to convey because we don't want that getting back into the ground. Perforate we use to pick up the storm water.
Yeah.
And get it someplace, but most of this is all going to be solid piping.
And that's all part of the maintenance from homeowners of clearing and.
Yeah, and like, like one of the maintenance activities I could, I could see on for the piping is, you know, maybe every five or ten years, they flush the piping to flush any sediments out. Um, inspecting drainage basins, you know.
Right, and is it, and is it going to be a formal plan? Like, is that usually set up, Rick? Okay.
So there's a operation and maintenance report that we put together that was submitted to DM. Where we basically outline all the, all the maintenance that needs to hap- happen.
Right, and that, of course, the maintenance has to get done. It's funny, I don't know if there was a plan and who directs the homeowners to say, hey, this has to get done now.
So that's where um the homeownership documents, which I know typically be submitted to the town to review as part of this process, those spell that out. So it's the homeowners association, there's going to be a board, they're going to be responsible for making sure this gets done.
And our town is responsible for making sure that homeowner.
And if they don't do it, they can make the, the town, town, towns usually have, you know, I'll say that policing authority that if they're not doing it, they can make them do it.
All right, I'm sure that local residents will bring it to their attention.
And that's the thing, people paying homeownership fees, dues, that's all goes to maintaining the development. Between repaving the roads, cutting the grass, repainting the units.
Right.
Fixing, you know, things that need to be fixed, so.
Thanks, Len.
You're welcome.
Anybody else hasn't?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Len, uh, again, back to uh sheet eleven. On um, the two basins that are on Tiffany Road, where you have the purple pipe that goes into the retention area. Um, at the end of your proposed new road. Um, so what you're telling us is further um south, southeast on Tiffany Road at the end of Old North Road, at the uh, the end of Trafford Park Road, excuse me. There's a couple of basins there between Trafford Park Road and um Old North Road, and they generally have water in them. Um, and across the street from Trafford Park Road, there's a new house, new house within the last eight or nine years. On the right side of that house, uh, before the house was even built, there's a couple of dry wells that were installed there. Um, are you familiar with those?
I am not, no.
And there's a wetland there, and those typically fill up with sediment that comes off of Trafford Park.
Okay.
And the, and the town has maintained those, and that area is very wet in there. So these proposed, a couple of basins that you have in Tiffany with the purple pipe that goes into your retention pond, that carries all the way around to the other end of the subdivision. Are those going to be, do you, in your opinion, be beneficial on picking up some of that existing storm water? Because that area does, it is wet and on that um, that southern side of Tiffany Road, um, it's quite wet.
Yeah, so I'm going to do my best to answer that question because I'm not familiar with those basins. I'm looking at sheet five, the top of graphic sheet. And I'm, I'm looking at what the elevation of that road is, and I see a two forty contour, basically at the intersection of both Tiffany and uh with uh Trafford and Old North. That's at two forty. Up where we're connecting our project, we're at two fifty, so that area is lower. So I don't see, I don't see that we can connect those basins up to our drainage basin. And if there's a wetland, you know, if there's a wetland there, now I've got test holes, you know, on the, along the boundary line where our basin's going to be. And I'm showing the groundwater tables greater than a hundred and twenty inches in one and greater than ninety two inches in the other. Um, you know, let's just call it very easy math, ten feet. You know, when you get down to those, you may not have a ten foot groundwater table, you may have a four foot groundwater table, which why they, you know, they may be full of water all the time. Um. You know, I don't know the history of them. It could be a maintenance issue. It could be that if they're leaching basins and they have not been maintained. You know, the leaching capability of that structure's been diminished. Um, and, you know, it would have to either be, it could be something where you try vacuuming out the sediments and see if it will take water, and if not, it may need to be replaced.
Just wanted to see if you were familiar with that.
Yeah.
And then also, Mr. Anderson said, not to reiterate this, but I'm going to, is homeowners association, this is quite an extensive drainage project. Um, to to make it work, and I believe it will work if it's properly maintained. In the experience that I've seen similar to your friend in Cumberland, even on a, a subdivision or a development like this, is where's the authority to get this done? Um, who has the authority to make sure that it's done? Because as you said with DM, you know, it has to be inspected every six month increment. Um, and, you know, the basins have to be vacuumed out, the pipes have to be flushed, where they're flushed out to have a vac truck that cleans them out. It's expensive and it's a lot of work. And then, then if it doesn't get done and it gets neglected and and the system fails, as you explained, it basically runs pretty flat, the system, um, so it can accumulate sediment over a very short amount of time and then not work as designed. And then it could affect the neighbors or the people surrounding it, getting storm water. And it goes back to, where's the authority? Who's going to be responsible for maintaining this very delicate system?
Yeah.
And make sure it works right. Where does, where does the town go? Where do the neighbors go when it doesn't work? Who, who is going to be responsible and how can we make sure that gets done?
Yeah, great question. Um, so part of that's a legal question and part of it's engineering. Um. So the, the authority ultimately lies with the town. And that comes from the state and that comes, then comes from the EPA. So every town, every municipality in Rhode Island has to file uh an MS four plan. And as part of that, the town needs to account for all their drainage. But they're even responsible, the, the town has to make sure because they're basically because it's, it's going into waters of the state. Um, that's where DM gets their authority, that's where the EPA has their authority. So what I would envision happening here is that there will be homeowners association. And it's going to be, be written into their bylaws, this maintenance that needs to be happen. And there's going to be a board, an elected board of the people that live here, that are going to be responsible for making sure these things happen. And it could be that they got to submit a, a report at the end of every year, and this is what the towns have to do. They have to submit to DM an MS four reports showing the maintenance that they've been doing and inventory of their systems. And that, that, that rolls down to the homeowners. And I've dealt with this for, for a number of years. This isn't a new thing that if you have a private development that, that flows into the state, you know, the town has the right to ask them for their maintenance records and quantify it. So I think that's where the, the town ultimately has the authority. If they're not, they're not doing their job maintaining this, they can step in and make them do it.
It, and, okay. Who, who is liable? After, there's an event, it's not maintained, it, it tops over because of sediment in the system. The town gets the complaint, there's property damage off site. Um, who, does a homeowners association have, required to have insurance for that?
So that gets onto the legal side and I just, in, in ultimately, anyone that has their fingerprints on it's probably liable if you, if you ask an attorney. But the ultimate responsibility for ma- keeping the system maintained is going to lie with, lie with the homeowners association. And then it's up to the town. If they're not doing it, the town can force them to do it, and then if they still don't do it, the town can do it themselves and then bill them. You know, so there, I think I, that's what I have seen in doing developments is that there are steps that can be taken to, you know, so that, that the maintenance does happen. And I'll be honest with you, the most important maintenance that hap- that has to happen is probably more with the base, this, the, the ba- the drainage complex, the ba- the, the pond complex, mowing that, um, keeping that clean. Yep, and and frankly, you know, the people that live, I mean, a lot of people live, would live near that, they don't want to see something that's unsightly. They want to see it cleaned and mowed and and uh maintained. And then the next is the catch basins. You know, that's what, that's, so um, usually there's not a lot of maintenance with the drainage pipes themselves other than flushing. But, you know, the catch basins, that's easy. You hire a vac truck, they spend a day or two out vacuuming out all the, all the uh ca- drainage catch basins and flushing them and and then you, you land, and this, the other beauty, beautiful part of this is because this is going to be a condo. They're going to hire a landscaper to cut the grass, maintain it. You just add the basin maintenance to that. That's what I've seen customarily.
I, I know on the homeowners association, I know there's been.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Sorry.
I know on the homeowners association in town, there's been issues where they, they just dissolved it. So the town, the town is in a tough position because they have to maintain it.
Yeah.
Um, and and that's my take on it. We just want to make sure that this is going to be ma- maintained.
Yeah. I, I think, you know, as, as uh Ms. Roach has said earlier, we're at the beginning of this process. So these are all great questions and I think they're all things that, you know, we can build into the whole, a lot of the drainage maintenance questions are all things that can be built into the approvals, into the. You know, we can build into the whole, a lot of the drainage maintenance questions are all things that can be built into the approvals, into the homeowners association. Uh, and it can be written to the town satisfactory.
They do need maintenance.
They do.
Somebody has to do it.
Absolutely, it's a requirement of the permits, not only by the town, but by the state.
And there are good homeowners association within this town that do do it.
Right.
But there are some that just dissolve them, we don't have homeowners association. So I just wanna make sure we're clear on that, and there's something in writing.
Yeah. I'm sure my client and Ms. Roach, Ms. Roach, very well understands.
Because section one is rental.
You said, say that again?
Section one, I'm calling section one, is all rentals.
Right.
So I'm not, I'm not saying that people rent, don't care, but it's, it's not.
So those, and, and where those renters are owners.
Right.
If, you know, Mr. DeBloys owns that.
Right.
He's gonna be the homeowners association, that's why we don't know if there's gonna be one or two homeowners association. You know, I think we gotta figure that out, but. I'm sure we can satisfy the town's concerns.
Thank you.
Yep.
And, and just to elaborate a little bit, that was gonna be my suggestion, I think the homeowners documents, so that every person that closes has it in writing.
Yeah.
These are the maintenance responsibilities that the homeowners association has to assume, and if it's not assumed. The town can step in and not build a homeowners association, but actually lean each property if the homeowners association does not respond. That's what I would like to see, something like that, so, cuz as Ron indicated.
Yeah.
I, I, is that something that maybe, and it's just a framework, I'm not saying it has to be that specific.
I have a whole list that, you know, my goal is to, after this meeting, get something back to you guys saying this, these are the things I think you want to see. Those are at final, but in the homeowners documents, which may end up a condition of approval. The rent part is probably the easiest part cuz there's one owner. So the onus is on some company, right, to, who will hire, like Lynn said, a landscape company who will build that in. Um, the other parts, the HOA or the con, you got probably one HOA and one condo. And we can have, I think I've got them all, but I'm sure we will get clarification from.
And I would trust, um, Mr. Bradley to give you the list of all the things that need to ma- be maintained in there. That would be key, I think, so that there's no surprises.
Understood.
Anybody else on the board? I think we're good with the drainage.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Onto your next favorite topic, traffic.
Traffic.
Let Paul uh, address this, and then I, I know your peer reviewers here, and we did have responses which should be in your bound copy um, to the peer review, so.
Yeah, just, just to be clear for the, for the people out there, we have a, a consultant that's working for the town for traffic. Mr. Bannon works for the developer.
For the record, Paul Bannon, Senior Project Director, Crossman Engineering, uh. Working the traffic engineering group uh, in our Warwick office, I've testified uh, before this planning board dozens of times over the years. Um, we were retained to complete a traffic impact assessment for the project. As part of that effort, we conducted a review of the site plans with the site engineer uh, to ensure that adequate and safe access is provided to. Uh, the development overall. We conducted numerous site visits various times of the day, days of the week, to observe traffic conditions in the project area. We inventoried the project area for existing land uses, uh, roadway inventories, horizontal, vertical geometry conditions. Uh, we obtained automatic traffic court accounts. Uh, for twenty-four hour, five-day period on uh. The project roadways that included Ty O'Gav, Old North Road, New London Turnpike. We also conducted peak hour manual turn and movement counts during the week, uh, during the seven to nine and, and uh, three to five peak periods of traffic that occur along those roadways. And we developed a trip generation estimate for the hundred and sixty, seventy-six unit development uh, that as. Described includes three distinct areas, then we assess, assess the safety and operations of um. Each of the study intersections that we reviewed. As indicated, the project is located along the southerly side of, of Ty O'Gav, uh, along the easterly side of, of Ty Oak Lake. It's a wooded twenty-seven acre property that will be subdivided into multiple residential lots. Um, within three distinct areas. I'm thoroughly, thoroughly familiar with this area, having worked on both the Oaks project uh, that was approved in. Twenty twenty-three, which is East Shore Drive and Green Farm um. Estates, which is uh, the Minglewood project that was approved in, back in two thousand sixteen, so I worked on both of those projects. Access to the home, new homes will be provided through a network of, of local streets. Uh, that formed the neighborhood with the primary site access um, for Area One on Ty O'Gav. For Area Two on, off of East Shore Drive and Old North Drive. Um, that includes the connection between those two roads that were part of the original approval for those projects. The fifty-foot right of ways were established um, through the planning review process, that that connection would be happened in the future. And that's what we're proposing. The third area, um, Area Three would access off of uh, New London Turnpike and Tiffany. Land use in the immediate area is predominantly residential, as uh, Mr. Bradley had, had indicated. Reviewing the roadways Ty O'Gav, it's classified as an urban principal arterial. Uh, it extends through commentary from, you know, Route ninety-five interchange to Main Street and West Ward. Uh, in the project area, it's posted at thirty-five miles an hour, approximately twenty-eight feet wide, it's delineated uh. The center lines and uh. White shoulder lines, no curbing and sidewalks are available. That section along our property frontage. Services roughly ten thousand two hundred vehicles per day. The AM peak occurs between eight and nine, with six hundred and twenty-five vehicles, and during the PM, which is the daily peak, eight hundred and eighty-five vehicles. We obtained data back in two thousand nineteen, I believe, volumes haven't changed. Much over that, over the last ten years, between two thousand fifteen and, and two thousand twenty-five, that we've looked out and I've studied this, this area. Volumes are, are very consistent over that ten-year period. New London Turnpike, it's classified um, as an urban minor arterial. Uh, extends from Division through the, Route ninety-five interchange, the south through three in the north. In the project area, it's posted at twenty-five miles an hour, it's approximately thirty feet wide, has concrete curbing and uh. And sidewalks. That road in the immediate area uh. To the north of Arnold, services approximately nine thousand vehicles per day. Again, the AM peak occurs from eight to nine with servicing five hundred and fifty vehicles, and the PM four to five with eight hundred and twenty-five. East Shore and Minglewood Drive, those are relatively new subdivision roads that were approved, they're twenty-six feet wide. That were constructed over the last five years, East Shore Drive has a sidewalk on the westerly side. While there are no sidewalks uh, along Minglewood in the Green Farm neighborhood. Uh, Tiffany Road, that's a local neighborhood street, that extends roughly thirty-two hundred feet uh. To the west from New London Turnpike, it dead-ends at Ty Oak Lake. That road is variable in width, ten to twenty feet. Uh, and in different uh, conditions between segments, between New London Turnpike and Old North, Old North and, and uh. Trafford Park, and then from Trafford Park to, to the lake. We're proposing, as indicated in, in staff report, peer review, that we're proposing to upgrade sections of, of Tiffany Road to services property. Angus Street, that's a roughly fifteen hundred foot road extending between Old North and London Turnpike. It's approximately thirty feet wide uh, with no curbing or, or sidewalks. As part of our review of safety, we reviewed the horizontal and vertical geometry of the roads in the ma- at the major intersections. To ensure that safe stopping site distance for access in and out of the neighborhood is provided. Based upon that review, all the intersections uh, with the roadway geometry provide, provide adequate. Uh, stopping site distance in accordance with the Astro Design Guidelines. We also reviewed accident data from the local police department for a three-year study period. The information determined a total of nine crashes occurred in that larger project area, which is roughly three per year, which is very minor. We didn't find any uh, location with consistent or severe accidents. Briefly going over future conditions, uh, we estimated. Vehicle trips for the hundred and seventy-six unit element, that includes. Uh, fifty-eight units in Area One, uh, fifty-seven units in Area Two, and sixty-one units in Area Three. For the overall development. The hundred and seventy-six, we generate a total of a hundred and eight trips during the morning peak. And a hundred and thirty-eight trips in the PM peak, that would be broken down. Area One, which has a single driveway on Ty Oak, uh, twenty-eight trips in the morning and thirty-three trips in the afternoon. For Area Two, with fifty-seven units, that'd be thirty-seven vehicle trips, total entering, exiting in the AM and forty-eight in the PM. And for Area Three, sixty-one units, that would re- uh, result in forty-three trips in the morning. And fifty-seven trips in the afternoon. Assigning those vehicles to the local network, looking at the major intersections of East Shore and Ty Oak. Uh, driveway in Ty Oak at Area One, Old North Road. And Ty Oak, and Angus, and New London Turnpike, each of those intersections presently operate. At a good level of service, uh, C or better, and adding that amount of traffic distributed at four points in and out of the neighborhood. That operation, good operations will continue in the future. So we feel that adequate and safe access can be provided with the recommendations we've made, uh, improving and upgrading Tiffany Road. Uh, to uh, better service that additional traffic. So available for any questions?
I have a, I have a question, I, I think it's pretty unanimous after reading the TRC reports that, you know, the town is in favor for safety reasons. To link Areas Two and Three. But my concern is, it's a double-edged sword, so it's a safety issue when they're not, when they're not linked, but when we link it. It's gonna put a lot more traffic, traffic on Tiffany. Because people are going to the highway, they're gonna go through, if they live in two, they're gonna go through three. And to Tiffany Road, down Old North Road and down Angus.
And they would do that today, in the.
You don't have all this density now, so it's.
No, I'm saying, if it's, if it's connected or not connected.
So you think it's not gonna change if it's connected or not connected?
Yeah, the, the dis- the distribution, the, the three points of access and egress to the neighborhood, Agnes. Angus, Old North, in East Shore.
The morning trips, the morning trips are gonna go to the highway.
Correct, so.
You're not gonna go out Ty Oak Avenue to go.
Whether, whether you're in, whether, where you live in two and three, you're gonna go up to uh, Minglewood to Old North and then down to Angus. Whether it's up here or down here, the, the endpoint doesn't change, so it's just how your internal circulation works.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, cuz Tiffany Road, in my opinion, I, I don't know, I haven't been down there a lot, but that needs some serious improvement.
Yes, and that's why we've made recommendations for upgrade.
All right.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to talk about that, so, um, first of all, the plan we have uh, shows Tiffany Road. From Trafford Park into this development, and then nothing from Trafford Park to. New London. And uh, I do agree that, at least for now, Waze and the apps that. Take you from Senator of England or ninety-five during peak periods, at the end of the day, will send you down Angus Street. To Old North Road, so if you lived in this. Area Three development, which is the one off of Tiffany. You would potentially go to Trafford Park Drive, take a left, and then take a right on Tiffany. So let's just talk about Tiffany Road between Trafford Park and this development. Do you know the legal width of the right-of-way? And has that been, you know, nailed down so that there can be a proposed width of road?
There are, we've identified the three segments of Tiffany, a portion of which the applicant owns. So he can do what he needs to do for that width, and that is from uh, Trafford Park to, to his property. So he's gonna upgrade that to the, to the minimum standard for.
Does he own all the way to Trafford Park, or does he, he owned to Lot ninety-three point oh one, which is owned by the La Breca's?
He, he owns up to Traffic Park, there's a, a right-of-way.
Okay, so what will the width of Tiffany, cuz I'm looking at this plan, and it clearly narrows after Lot One in his subdivision. There's even room for a sidewalk, which actually stops at the uh, intersection of Road A and, and Tiffany. And then it looks like there is a width of an area there along Lot One, and there's some other triangle, I'm sorry, I can't really make out what the legend is. And then you come to the driveway of the La Breca's on Lot ninety-three, from there to Trafford Park. That's what I'm talking about.
I don't have that detailed, it's my understanding, on the plans, they show the widening.
Can we put up sheet number? Hold on, it might be better to even go right to. Uh, actually. Yeah, eleven actually shows. A different depiction. Than eight, for that location, actually, they're two different graphics.
Yeah, so the, he has the right to widen to Trafford Park.
Okay, and what will the road width be from Trafford Park? Where it says road widening, I, is that gonna be twenty-four feet? Or is that, what's the maximum you could widen that road without infringing on private property on either side of Tiffany?
I don't have the, the exact width, it's probably twenty-four minimum. Um, again, that section of, of Tiffany, I think, is maybe sixteen feet, but we'll work with the town.
Cody, could you just, I'm sorry, could you just put up plan, sheet number eleven, please? I did, and that's the one that was misleading because it's really narrow on sheet eight, but then on, on, on sheet eleven, it appears to be wider.
Yep, that's eleven, wow, it was, it doesn't look that clear, okay, so, no, that's, yeah. Oh, okay, it's all the way up at the top. So we don't know what the width of Tiffany Road's gonna be up in that top corner up there, it just says Tiffany Road widening.
With the improvement, with, with the improvements.
Correct.
How wide are you visualizing that road?
Twenty-four, it'll be consistent with what we're proposing internally, um, that's what we showed on the plans in my traffic.
Twenty-two, with a sidewalk or without a sidewalk?
You don't have the right-of-way width, first.
Okay, so it'll just be a twenty-two foot wide road?
Yes, it's. I, I believe it's sixteen now, in that area, fifteen to sixteen.
Cuz what I'm looking for is there's a sidewalk on Trafford Park on that side, you get to Tiffany, there's no sidewalk. Then you go by the first house that's on Tiffany, there's no room for anything except twenty-two feet of roadway. And then you get to this subdivision, and there's actually room for a sidewalk, but there really wasn't any point in carrying it down to that property because it won't go anywhere.
Yeah, the road, the roadway width is the, the priority at that point.
Yeah, okay. Well, that bottleneck.
In, in our traffic study, we've recommended to carry that widening down to Old North Road. So that's, that's the middle section, um, the town in peer review, knowing the one-way section of Tiffany, its. Width and condition, uh, have recommended that the owner uh, upgrade that, but that section. Has its challenges relative to right-of-way wetlands, um, but I believe that the owner is committed to working with the town. To upgrade it to its maximum extent possible. Where he's done that before on other projects.
Because Tiffany's definitely gonna be affected, I mean, I.
Correct.
Sometimes when I go down that one-way street, you take a left, you end up at Tiffany, and I don't wanna go that way, but I end up, and I've been in the town my whole life just about. When I go the wrong way, I end up in Tiffany, so, but it's.
And we, we agree, and, and, and we're.
And Old North isn't.
We'll work with the town.
No, no doubt Angus Street seems to be. The preferred route now, I mean, but, but it's gonna get, there's gonna get more traffic, and I don't wanna um. Say, hey, that's where we should direct it, but it seems the likely path, if Tiffany remained as narrow as it is, in a one-way street, would be to go.
It's, it's, it's convenience of people coming from the south, they're gonna use Tiffany, if they're coming from the north, they'll use Angus, it's the first point of access into the neighborhood that they'll use. That.
Well, Waze doesn't send you down Tiffany. That, well, Waze doesn't send you down Tiffany. That's all I'm going to say.
Maybe because it looks like a dirt path.
Well, either way, the point was, we need to have a decent means of ingress to a new development that has, how many were in?
61, 61.
61 units in there. And, and they have sidewalks in their area. And, and with that type of density, and then to have sidewalks on Trafford Park and then all these other new subdivisions around, and then leave that one stretch, which is going to be the most heavily traveled stretch going in and out of there because the other roads you break up as soon as you get to Road A and Road B. It just presents itself, and I just think that's something that's going to have to be addressed at a minimum. That does, and, and then the rest of Tiffany, you're right, it's going to have challenges, both environmental challenges and legal challenges if, if you're not, or someone is not able to secure the appropriate.
We'll, we'll work with the town to provide the best solution with the limitations in that area.
Anybody else have any traffic questions? I just want to add too, I have, I have a daughter in her 30s and let me tell you something. Those trucks dropping off packages every single day. With this destiny, they're going to be hitting marriage.
Mine too.
It, it's amazing. I mean, nobody goes shopping anymore. So, I mean, that's, that's got to be taken into consideration too.
Yes.
This is a very dense project.
Understood.
And is it Mr. Chevlin? Could I ask him to come up?
Yeah, the, the, the good thing is, it's, we, there's not a single point of concentration of traffic. It's distributed within the three areas to the local streets.
If you don't mind sharing the stage, I just want to hear what our consultant has to say. Because I'm very concerned, I think everybody's concerned with the traffic. Thank you. Name and address, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board for the record. My name is John Chevlin, registered professional engineer, employed by Park Corporation of Lincoln, Rhode Island. Been doing traffic engineering work for about 35 years and believe I testified in front of pretty much every community in the state of Rhode Island. Give you a brief overview in regards to what we hired to do and just the results of what we've had. So we did go ahead and we got a copy of the report done by Crosman Engineering and also took a look at the site plans from Dupree Engineering. We did a thorough review of the traffic study that was performed by Crosman. And we also answered some of the questions that the town had interest in as far as, that weren't in the report, as far as connections between the two streets, sidewalks on Section One, whether those should be included in there. And then obviously Tiffany Road. The study that was done by Crosman, you know, was performed in regards to industry standards. You know, the traffic counts were performed. I did have some confusion on the traffic counts because he referred to some counts in the report that were done in 2015 and 2019. And then I, it was my mistake as far as attorney movement counts. They hadn't done, what I thought, when I looked at my calendar, was a Monday and they had the hours between three and five. I was corrected that actually the date, I think it was March 4th, is actually a Tuesday. Usually you do a traffic counts on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, which are considered the typical time periods for a traffic study because you lose on Mondays and Fridays, long weekends and work from home and such. So, so they did do the counts appropriately. Crosman did do those ATRs and referred back to us just to show what the traffic patterns are as far as the heaviest peak time. Looking at the numbers that they provided, the peak hours that they had, and they did catch the peak hour with their attorney movement counts, which shows out there that the highest volumes were from four to five. And typically residential, you look between four and six. But they did have good support in regards to showing that the highest volumes on the roadways were four to five, so we found that to be acceptable. So that's, you know, as far as the data gathering for the traffic counts, we're satisfied with that. The, they looked at safety and capacity. As Mr. Bannon mentioned, you know, the crash data did not reveal any areas that had a, a history of, of crashes, which, you know, based on data provided, we agree with. Then they also took a look in regards to make sure you can get safe access in and out of the sites by looking at site distances. And they have shown within the report that you are able to see, have good sight lines with all the exit movements to provide safe access in and out of the, of the developments. Their traffic capacity, you know, based on the volumes that they had with the trip generations, they went to the industry standard, the ITE Trip Generation Manual. And the, the numbers that they have generated for the AM and PM peak hours are consistent with the industry standards for residential type of uses. They, they took those volumes, they distributed them within the traffic streams in regards to where they feel traffic will be going. We agree with their trip distribution, and guess what they did? And then the capacity analysis they performed, you know, indicates that they're, you know, all the intersections are still going to operate a very acceptable level of service. I think there was one that had worst cases level of service D during the PM pre-count, I think, which was at East Shore Road. But the volume, the, the time increase between what they have existing versus proposed was minimal is on what a magnitude of a three to five seconds or so for delay. So we feel like the capacity analysis was done, you know, in according. And, you know, the, the results were satisfactory to us. So the questions came up in regards to the connections of Sections Two and Section Three. You know, looking at the traffic engineering side, you know, we looked at it first for safety. And I think, I think somebody mentioned in regards to, you know, the public safety as far as access in there. You know, I know the police, the fire, emergency rescues, all would like to have access in there at the safe time. You know, seconds count when you have an emergency. Having two cul-de-sacs come to the end and have, have them that close, I, I agree that there's no reason they shouldn't be connected for that reason. Looking at that and taking a look in regards to what impacts that may have on the traffic capacity. You know, as Mr. Bannon mentioned, I think you're going to see a distribution of traffic that's going to occur when you do connect those. That some that are now coming out to Tiffany are now going to be going out the other way and vice versa. So I think the overall distribution may not be that big of an impact as far as level of service out there with the connection. The Tiffany Road work, as I mentioned, we did get a response, some comments back from Alar Palkin Shan. And it was addressed in their letter report in regards to what they're planning to do with Tiffany Road. And I believe, you know, Area One and Area Two, they are going to go ahead and widen those to 22 feet to go ahead and make sure you have access. Those are the two way sections in there. And our report in Area, Area Three, right now, it varies out there from 10 to 12 feet. You know, we felt that they should try to maximize the width of that roadway. I'm not sure exactly in regards to how much property they own out there right away. I know I did look at the town's GIS database. Those aren't always 100% accurate, so it's hard to know in regards to what the exact right of way is out there. But we just made a recommendation to try to maximize that as much as you can. I know the, I believe the fire code for a one way street is 12 feet, but you also have a roadway that's very curvy in sections. So we left it as regards to try to maximize the width on there, even to accommodate one way traffic, you know, wherever that could be done. And I know there's a response to his concerns about drainage, topography and everything else. We don't have a survey plan of that roadway, so we did drive it to take a look at it. But, you know, I think there could be some things that could go ahead and help widen that a little bit more to make it better, so. Then the last thing that we, we looked at was, there was a question in regards to sidewalks in Area One. That's the area that had the, the apartments. You know, my thought was, and this, this goes back and forth between different towns, they have different opinions. It's a 600 foot cul-de-sac, there's 58 units. I thought there's a possibility with a lot of children in that area. I know that's not a long length where cars could speed, you would think on a 600 foot cul-de-sac. But, you know, I, I recommended in regards to putting a sidewalk at least on one side for children who may be out there. I think it was mentioned before about parking, if you do have cars parked in the street, because you've got multiple cars, whatever. But I recommend the sidewalk on one side. I know it goes to Ty Oak Ave. There's no sidewalks connected there, but I thought just internally for what's being proposed and the, and the amount of units, I thought it may be worthwhile putting sidewalks on at least one side. So it's a summary of what, you know, what we looked at and then also just responses to some of the questions that we were asked to go ahead and look into. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, my, my main concern was if we link the two and the three. You feel as Mr. Bannon said, that there's enough egresses where the, the traffic will flow in different directions, so it wouldn't change anything by us linking those two.
Yeah, I, I would, I would tend to agree with that. And like I said, when you, you look at traffic capacity, I know it's adding more traffic on some streets more than others. I know they're residential streets, but, you know, they'll see, either way, they're going to see more traffic on the roadways. But just based on the capacity analysis they did, it's not going to result in any intersections being overcapacity or causing problems and such like that, so.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Chevlin?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Those are our witnesses. I will defer to the chair as to, I know we have to talk about waivers and we have to talk about what the board's looking for so we can bring more information to the next meeting. But I know the public's here and anxious, so I will turn it over to.
I mean, if you want to complete your presentation or you just, I, I will go to the public hearing now. I see you got your yellow pad ready.
I'm ready.
I'll, if, if it's okay with the board, I think I'll entertain a motion to open up public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open public hearing.
I have a motion by Mr. Smith.
I'll second it.
I have a second by Mr. Ray's. All those in favor? All right, public hearing is now open. I'm going to start on this side of the room. Anybody can come up? You want to come up and? Name an address for the record, please. And thank everybody for staying calm. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristen Barron. I'm at 255. Kristen Barron. B A R O N. 255 East Shore Drive. I didn't have anything prepared. I just kind of want to share my reactions to what has been shared here tonight. I appreciate that they have brought in a bunch of experts and engineers and people way smarter than me to do all these testings. I'm just giving you the experience that I've had living on East Shore Drive for the last two years. There has been overwhelming drainage issues and flooding for all of our neighbors. Every time it rains, the retention pond is filled to the brim and then flows down into the, what I understand to be a senior center or a senior housing authority. They've had major drainage issues there. We have no streetlights on, in our neighborhood. So it's already really dangerous to drive there, particularly at this time of year when it's dark at four o'clock at night. We have many families with young children who want to be out and playing. And the idea that we're connecting another neighborhood, not just a neighborhood like ours with, you know, single family homes, but 176 units to flow traffic, could be two, three, four cars per unit into a neighborhood with many young children who are out playing in the neighborhood, riding their bikes, people walking their dogs, is really concerning. The school, I don't know if you all were able to receive the video from one of my neighbors, Colleen, who sent footage of what it looks like during the morning and afternoon drop off and pickup routines for Ty Oak Elementary, where a line of parents sit in their cars to drop their kids off. And then you cannot actually pass two cars on the street because that line fills up for, you know, 45 minutes to an hour each day. And you also have parents who are walking their children to school without an actual sidewalk once you get to where the elementary school is. So it's very dangerous for those families. The beautiful woodlands behind my home, I'm actually, I live in the unit or the home that would be just adjacent to where the new street connecting the new proposed unit or proposed neighborhood to East Shore Drive. We purchased that property because we wanted to have more space and more, you know, room to grow our family and the privacy that that offered. And I believe, based on the plans, that they're only putting in like a 20 foot buffer. So we would lose all of that. That was part of why my family chose to come here and live in Coventry from East Providence, where we lived on a very busy street and didn't want to raise our family there because we didn't have any privacy. We didn't have access to safe streets where our kids could play. I guess lastly, I would say I'm a little concerned about where the engineers, I'm sorry, don't remember your name, but we kept referring to like the HOA is going to take care of all this. The HOA is going to be responsible for cleaning out the, again, not my terminology, but the, the wampiness, the basic, thank you, and, and getting that to Lake Ty. I appreciate that. We have an HOA at East Shore Drive and we still don't have access to it. It's still under control of Bob de Boy or D2 Homes. I don't understand how a builder who hasn't taken care and met his promises to the people he's already sold homes to is allowed to go and build more neighborhoods. Particularly when we're talking about low income housing, where like, in our neighborhood, we've had to put in so much of our own personal money to take care of problems that should have been solved, that should have been taken care of by the, the original builder, but haven't been. But we were able to go and do that ourselves. And you're going to put that burden on low income people who, we don't, I, I don't trust him. I don't trust him to do what he said he's going to do. And I think it's really irresponsible to allow him to continue to build when there are multiple claims with the Attorney General of Rhode Island and lawsuits against him. I apologize if I'm randomly, I didn't have this planned in advance, but I appreciate your time and letting me speak. And I really hope that you all take into consideration everything that the public has to say here tonight because it's really important and it's going to impact a lot of people's lives. So, thank you.
Thank you. And it. And as you know, I know you live in Mingle Wood and you're concerned of traffic, East Shore, but we really have to focus on this project. We can't go back to the last projects, unfortunate. But we do take concerns with the traffic. But as far as the drainage issues that you brought up, we really have to focus on this project. Sure, come on right up. No, no, that's fine. I don't put time limits on public comment. I don't believe in it.
I, I totally understand that. I think what I'm trying to say is, we are already at a point in our neighborhood where the drainage issues have not been taken care of. And if you come in and tear down woodlands that actually help to absorb, naturally absorb water and put in 176 units, there is no engineer that can tell me that is not going to have an impact on the current neighborhoods, both Tiffany Road, Mingle Wood, East Shore Drive. It is a compounding issue. So I understand that we can't go back and litigate, you know, previous neighborhoods that have been built. But there is going to be a compounding issue if you were to uproot those natural woodlands that you have right now and put in 176 multifamily units. It is undoubtedly going to have an impact and harm the people that are already here.
It's understandable and well spoken. Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to get to this section next. I'm going to start over there. Everybody will have a chance to speak. Name an address, please.
Chris Martin, Three Overlook Circle. What Ms. Barron just said regarding, I, I had to chuckle when the engineer was talking because he said, we know there's drainage problems in the area. They're not our responsibility. It's not his responsibility, but it still is his client's responsibility. As she said, we don't even own the homeowners association at this point. We've been there for two, over two years. And to this point, whatever maintenance was supposed to have been done in those drainage areas, besides cutting the grass, nothing else has been done. Is that going to be left until eventually we get ownership? And then it's going to cost us to do it? And as she also said, we were told, no, you don't get any kind of lighting in there. You know, I mean, everybody went out and bought solar lights. So we have some kind of lighting in the neighborhood. Just looking at what we're talking about here, 176 units, going at the minimum of two cars, you're adding 356 cars to a basic neighborhood. Just going by the minimum, minimum of three people in a household, you're adding 528 people to a neighborhood. Mingle Wood has, I think, 11 or 12 or 13 houses. Our neighborhood has 33 houses. Common sense here, common sense. You have a neighborhood here with 11 or 12 homes. You have a neighborhood here with 33 homes. And you're going to stick 176 homes right in between us? What kind of common sense does that make? I haven't been in this area very long. I've only been here a few years. But I've driven around and I don't know. Maybe somebody can tell me. Where in our 10 foot, 10 mile area, rather, is there something like this? tell me. Where in our 10-foot, 10-mile area, rather, is there something like this that they're proposing, where you have a residential neighborhood here and a residential neighborhood here with those amount of homes, and you stuck 175 homes in between them? I don't know. I don't know. Maybe one of you on the board knows of a neighborhood within a 10-mile area that we have that sort of thing. But we've had all kinds of problems in our neighborhoods, all kinds of problems. A lot of it was the drainage. It still is the drainage. And we were promised things, it may sound stupid at this point, every single one of us were promised that we were gonna have lake rights down to Lake Ty Oak and that the builder was gonna supply a path down there so we could all walk down there and enjoy the lake. He was even at one point gonna build a little stand so we could put kayaks. You can't walk down there. It's nothing but a bunch of goddamn trees and stumps. That was all a big lie, like some of the other things that we got lied about. All I'm asking right here is for a little common sense. And I'm sure that all of you people at one time or another have probably walked around those neighborhoods and seen the area that they want to put 176 units in. In my opinion, it's absolutely ridiculous for the amount of space that you want to put these, these homes in with all these people and all these cars and everything else. And as far as all these, put a road 24 feet, I'm a retired fireman. I know what it's like at a fire scene with a bunch of apparatus. 24 feet is nothing. Nothing. All my opinion. If any one of you gentlemen would like to come over to my house someday and sit on my patio and look in the back, feel free to come on over, see what, see what we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant will answer every question too, by the way. We're doing it as a whole, but the applicant is, attorney is writing all the questions down. You can come up and talk, sir, but please, we're gonna start, I'll let you talk, but we are gonna go from that side. But since you're already up here, I'm gonna let him talk.
Okay. Thank you.
Name an address, please.
Yes, sir. Gregory Rice, 249 East Shore Drive. I moved here in 2021 with my wife. Ironically, I'm also a real estate developer and involved in a variety of municipalities across the state. Most recently, I completed an adaptive reuse of the former Sacred Heart Church in Windsocket. I converted that church into 32 market rate units. I'm also the Vice President of Nexus Property Management, we're a nationwide property management franchise located in the bucket. Before I go any further, I want to take this time to compliment the applicant. I have seen their other projects around town, and I have to say overall, they do a great job. It's extremely difficult to do what we do as developers, and there's millions of dollars on the line. It's a very delicate balancing act. Additionally, we have a responsibility to continue rejuvenating our housing stock here in Rhode Island. The average age of a home is 60 years old. In addition, a third of Coventry's housing was built before 1959. We cannot stand here today and completely oppose any and all development. It's necessary as time continues to march on. With this said, I have a variety of concerns and objections in regards to the project. The submission is designed to defend one thing: density. Maximizing the number of units is clearly the developer's primary goal, and everything and everyone else be damned. I understand the developer's desire to maximize value from their investment. However, the amount of regulatory relief being requested is abnormally excessive, essentially asking for exceptions to anything that might limit the scale or number of units. This proposal takes what was once a single-family lot and attempts to subdivide it into a high-density complex. The developer is pushing to move through preliminary review quickly without providing full details. That's a strategic move. Once preliminary approvals are granted, projects like this gain momentum and become difficult to stop later. The developer is counting on that. It doesn't strike me as the best deal yet for the town. It benefits the developer. It's not balanced. The narrative accompanying the submission is boilerplate and noncommittal, filled with vague statements and misleading comparisons. I've seen many such documents in my career, and this one reads like a classic example: "Designed to obscure reality." From a safety perspective, the units are tightly packed, roads are narrow and dead-ended, no place for cars, and little room for emergency access. Fire trucks will have serious difficulty maneuvering here, and the risk of fire spread is real, given the minimal spacing between the buildings. So in summary, the developer is seeking relief from numerous regulations such as density, minimum lot sizes, allowable use, which I don't know has even come up tonight, setbacks, landscaping and buffer requirements, roadway whiffs, curbs and sidewalks, separation distances between buildings, lot coverage limits, dead end and cul-de-sac restrictions. The narrative, the proposed density matches post-war Pembroke Lane developments from the 1950s. These outdated standards are irrelevant to modern safety and planning practices. The surrounding neighborhood consists of single-family homes on 1-4 acre lots, not comparable to mid-20th century subdivisions. My question is, why would a board consider 1950s post-war development standards as a model for a 2026 project? The narrative claims the project provides, quote, "A variety of housing types," yet all proposed units appear nearly identical in size, layout, and form. On page three of the narrative, they cite 1,000 foot, excuse me, 1,000 square foot homes as context, ignoring the fact that many surrounding properties are up to 3,000 square feet, valued at over $600,000. In addition, it is my belief that the most recent development on East Shore Drive was done first to obtain high resale value, only to drive those values and quality of life down, post facto, with the proposal of this development. Road whiffs, proposing 24-foot roads as opposed to 30, unsafe. Sidewalks, proposing elimination of sidewalks, and that's another density-driven choice. This would expect 400 residents and 340 vehicles at minimum. Parking, with reduced setbacks, driveways appear too short for standard vehicles. Trucks will likely extend into the roadway, obstructing traffic and emergency access. My question is, since the front setback is 20 feet and a common car is 15 to 17 feet, and a truck can be up to 21 feet, where will all the vehicles that don't fit in driveways park? How will on-street parking on narrow roads further impact fire access and pedestrian safety? Curbing, the developer proposes eliminating curbs, claiming cost and stormwater benefits. In reality, this saves the developer money while reducing infrastructure quality. Who benefits from the lack of curbs? Use not allowed. Attached, single-fel, excuse me, attached, single-family dwellings, townhouses, are not permitted in this zoning district. The developer's entire proposal hinges on a use that is explicitly disallowed. My question is, why should a non-permitted use be approved? Who benefits from this exception, and how does it align with the zoning intent of our neighborhood? Density and unit count, the developer cites arbitrary state laws to justify six units per acre, and that's irrelevant to this specific zoning district. Local ordinance allows zero of this type. Lot area and setbacks. A 75% reduction in lot area and 50% reduction in setbacks are excessive and clearly meant to increase density. So the question there is, how does such an extreme reduction in lot area and setbacks support the town's zoning goals, our safety, and most importantly, maintain the existing quality of life in the neighborhood? Fire safety. Five-foot side setbacks are dangerous and invite rapid fire between units. The question here is, with proposed side yard setbacks reduced to five feet, who will certify that a five-foot separation is safe and that fire cannot jump or spread from one unit to the next? Cul-de-sacs and dead ends, these layouts are restricted for safety reasons. With narrow roads and no sidewalks, they become even more dangerous. The question here is, do the local fire and emergency personnel agree that the cul-de-sac layout provides adequate access, maneuverability, and evacuation routes? Landscape buffers, the plan relies on, quote, "existing vegetation," unquote, rather than required buffer plantings. Another cost-saving move. Question here is, who benefits from omitting landscape buffers, and without them, how will privacy and light pollution be managed for adjacent properties? Open space, which was briefly mentioned. Delaying open space planning to final review is unusual and strategically avoids scrutiny. The question here is, why isn't the open space pan, plan being required now? Mature trees. Deferring identification of trees over 50 years old hides the true environmental impact. The question here is, why are mature trees not being identified now? And without that data, how can the board assess deforestation and impact? Lighting. The lighting plan lacks measurable commitments. Statements like, quote, "Every attempt will be made," unquote, are unenforceable. The question here is, will the developer provide a photometric analysis and guarantee zero light spillover pollution onto neighboring properties using shielded, night sky compliant fixtures? Will there be a minimum distance from the lot lines for lighting fixtures? Acoustics. The claim that, quote, "No additional noise," unquote, will result from 176 units is ridiculous. The question here, on what basis does the applicant claim no increase in noise when over 400 residents and 340 vehicles are anticipated? Dust control. The phrase, quote, "Will endeavor to control dust," unquote, is meaningless. I, along with others in this room, just lived through years of dust, debris, and dirt, every day. My beautiful Mustang, my beautiful Chevelle, my motorcycle, my truck, my trailer, dirty, mud, puddles, everything. The question here is, can the developer specify exactly what dust control measures will be implemented during construction? How compliance will be monitored or enforced? And where will this commitment be documented? And finally, traffic. The submitted traffic study excludes local intersections and non-peak hour data, if I'm up to date. And the question there is, when will a comprehensive study be conducted that utilizes realistic, non-peak hour, nearest intersection data instead of selective data from remote locations conducted during peak hours, which obscures impact? So overall, as you can tell, I do not support this plan. I am all for progress, but this is not progress. This is taking Coventry and turning it into West Warwick. Some might say Central Falls. I am calling on the CPC to deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on that side like to come up?
Yeah, my name is Andy Lampka. I live at 69 East Shore Drive.
Can you?
Yes, hi.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, I moved to
Can you just say your name and address?
Yes, my name is Andy Lampka. I live at 69 East Shore Drive. I've lived here for the last 23 years. And prior to moving there, I'm an avid fisherman, one would say a fanatic. My wife and I looked all over Rhode Island. Prior to settling on Lake Ty Oak, we looked at all the different places, and we finally decided to buy a house there. Over this, I'm concerned about the degradation that Lake Ty Oak would suffer from this development. Over this last summer, probably the worst summer in the last 23 years, the quality of the lake has been severely degraded, starting the week after the Fourth of July, which is the peak of the summer for everybody on Lake Ty Oak. Fireworks, it's just a wonderful time of year. On the seventh, Briar Point was closed down. An extremely high level of bacteria, enterococci bacteria specifically, which is an indicator of human and animal fecal waste, an extremely high level. One month later, in addition to that, and the lake was never reopened, they did repeated testing. I talked to the DM, I talked to the Rhode Island Department of Health, asking what the impact would be. Should I even be out there fishing, kayaking, canoeing, whatever? A month later, an extreme outbreak of cyanobacteria, commonly known as blue-green algae, which is extremely dangerous. We have pets, we have a golden doodle. Everybody on the lake has, has dogs, pets, a lot of children. The Department of Health specifically told me the cyanobacteria is particularly dangerous to children, pets, anybody on any kind of immunotherapy, any kind of cancer treatment, and they said the level behind Lake Taco was one of the highest levels they had ever seen. I said, "Should I even be out there fishing?" I mean, sometimes I bite my fishing line rather than using a clipper, just to do it quickly. And they told me, "I really wouldn't do that." They said it's an extremely dangerous level. The last time I talked to them was in October, and the level was still up there. They were still testing. They still had the enterococci bacteria from fecal waste. They still had the cyanobacteria. So we were basically deprived of the use of the lake for the whole summer. I went elsewhere. I went to different places fishing, but I always enjoyed I went elsewhere, I went to different places fishing, but I always enjoyed being able to fish right from my backyard every day. Also, when they were talking about the treatment of runoff, we have a gentleman that lives on the same street, a few houses from me, and he's a supervisor from the Kent County Water Department. We've had a lot of flooding in the basements there. Everybody along Lake Tyo. I live between, you know, Lake Taco and Rawlinson, like right in the middle. All of us have had sump pumps replaced, double sump pumps, French drains, I mean, to the tune of thousands and thousands of dollars. It's endless. I have plumbers coming down, looking for different solutions. It was bad when we had the 500-year flood, that was particularly bad. For the last couple of years, we've had like some severe flooding. So I'm concerned about any runoff, cutting down trees, the environmental impact, more flooding. And I just think, I just don't want the lake to turn, you know, I'm 76 years old, I don't want to move anyplace else, and I don't want Lake Tyo to turn into an open sewer. And the conditions of the lake are measurable. I mean, I welcome anybody not to take me at my word, but to call the Rhode Island Department of Health and call the DM, and you can get the test results and see what they are. They're measurable. This is science. And the enterococci bacteria from that type of thing, what could get hepatitis or anything? I mean, when you're in the water, swimming, whatever, you're going to ingest water, you can't avoid it. And we basically lost the use of the lake for the entire summer. So I don't think that additional construction, and when the engineer was talking about, you know, treating the groundwater and eventually ending up back into Lake Tyo, well, the temperature of that water, running over concrete and everything, raises the temperature of the lake, influences the biomass. It's that raising of temperature and everything that causes cyanobacteria. It's just an endless downhill spiral or cycle. And I just don't want to see that happen. And I just want to go on the record as saying I am firmly against the project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else on that side? Come on up, sir. I'm sorry, it's very hard for us to see out there. I just want to let everybody know. So if I miss somebody, just give me a holler. Thank you. Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Robert Ellis. I'm at 30 Tiffany. I want to thank everybody for your diligence during this process. I realize it's straining resources in the administration as well as everything else. So thank you for taking this so seriously. Prior commenters have taken a lot of the words right out of my mouth. This developer has requested three zoning exceptions, major ones, and another nine development regulations, exceptions to those as well. I think we all want to improve the housing crisis, and I think that maybe we should be flexible and maybe some flexibility is warranted. But this number of exceptions is extreme. I think, I think, I realize that's my opinion, but I think other people in this room share that opinion with me. This is an abandonment of our existing practices and housing density guidelines in this town and in this neighborhood. Letting this project go forward as it is designed disrespects existing homeowners, voters, and taxpayers. We're all subject to those same zoning regulations. To grant the exception to this developer is disrespectful. The developer has, in my estimation, failed to demonstrate that their project would otherwise be infeasible without these exceptions. They failed to demonstrate that these regulations are a major hardship. They haven't offered any substantial benefit with these plans to the public. At least not to the existing taxpayers, not to existing voters, not to Lake Tyo, not to the surrounding woods or wetlands, not to the overwhelmed storm drain system, not to the people who have flooded basements and yards, and definitely not to the poor-conditioned roads in the neighborhood. But with all that said, and I think others have made the case for me already, I also want to have a quick reality check. As I mentioned, I personally live on Tiffany Road. I can speak to the conditions firsthand. Regarding the storm drains. The water table on Tiffany is very high. Basement and yard flooding is extremely common on the south side of Tiffany Road especially, with every rainstorm, just a moderate amount of rain. The storm drains on Tiffany are perpetually backed up. There are culverts on my property specifically, that have been mentioned actually earlier today, that literally shoot water into the air during a normal rainstorm. Tiffany Road cannot accommodate even a tiny amount more water. And yet, one of the drainage ponds in the plan, the southernmost one, is right on Tiffany and has a pipe directly into that same drainage system. This will put the entire Tiffany Road in danger for additional flooding, and there's already too much. Speaking for myself, I've already put an extraordinary amount of money into controlling water on my property. And there's still more to do. There will always be more to do. Regarding the road itself. Tiffany Road is extremely narrow. It's curvy. It's very poorly maintained because it's hard to maintain. It's especially true between New London and Old North. Repaving that won't work. Adding a new, a couple feet of width wherever you can scrounge it up, it won't work. This section is the most traveled section of Tiffany Road, and it's the one section you can't widen. This will not address the safety concerns that will raise, that were raised earlier. Additionally, the traffic report seemed to be pretty detailed. There was, there were observations of a lot of intersections around the neighborhood. Notably, I couldn't see even one measurement of baseline traffic at any of the intersections with Tiffany. Not one. There were measurements on Angus, there were measurements on Minglewood, there were measurements on Old North, there were no measurements on Tiffany. The only measurement that there was about Tiffany was an estimation of 40-something cars in the AM peak and 60-something cars in the PM peak. But that's a lot of cars for Tiffany. That's not like a 10% increase or 20% increase. It's probably like a multiplier. And I wish I had data, but for some reason it was omitted from the report. I think we should all ask why that data wasn't included. And I think we should demand it. It was also previously implied that Angus is the preferred route into the neighborhood. Respectfully, it is not. Google, if you come from I-95 or Division Street, or any of those other roads that are extremely busy and the interstate, Google Maps, Apple Maps, and Waze direct you onto Tiffany. Everyone on Tiffany knows that. Everyone in Old North knows that people cut up Old North to get to Tyo to cut the corner off. That section of road is traveled, and it is the preferred route. Angus is not the preferred route. So those are my sanity checks here, and I know I'm forgetting things. Maybe others will bring up more. Respectfully, the developer could instead construct homes that adhere to existing R-20 regulation guidelines. If they did that, they would be able to create housing without a need for public comment. They would be able to do that without putting existing homes at risk. They would be able to do that without straining local resources. They would do that without angering taxpayers and voters. And it would still be very lucrative for the developer. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Anybody else on this side? I'm going to move into the center now. Come on up, sir. Name and address, please.
Jason Noons, Fourview Road, lakefront, Tyo.
Noons, and you ending up?
I'm on the lake, lakefront. Village Tyo, 176 units. This is one of three major land developments, and I think all three, I think you all know about the three major land developments between New London Turnpike, Arnold Road, there's a 700 unit proposed, okay. They're all within a half-mile radius of Lake Tyo. The proposed 176-unit development on approximately 27 acres, it is zoned R-20 residential, 20,000 square feet with 150 feet of road frontage. That's, that's the standard. I know they're asking for a variance, but if the 150-foot road frontage was to be met, it would be maximized at 58 units. Taking into consideration the roads and frontage, the most possible, that would be, would be 40 dwellings on a standard. I am by no means an expert. The pre-engineering stormwater management report by BMP, best management practices, claims that for a two-to-100-year event, proprietary treatment would be 50% of more of total suspended solids. 85% of it generated by roadways. Questions. One, inspections would be quarterly and/or 2.7 inches of rainfall. By whom? Question two, street and parking areas swept minimum twice per year. By whom? Three, salt storage converted impermeable surfaces. What effect is that going to have on the lake? Four, not mandatory inspectors to be trained engineers. What does that mean? Five, roads A, B, and C, are they going to become private or town? Traffic study of the same general area, December 2019, which was the project The Oaks, somewhat consistent showing increased delays from 2025 at 25.8 seconds to 2030, 34.6 seconds. There is an impact. Don't let them fool you. The current conditions of the roads are noted as mostly poor and fair, multiple notes of cracking patches, temporary patches, no pedestrian accommodations, no crosswalk, Angus Street non-ADA compliant. New London Turnpike has high, this is their traffic study, that, I mean, you guys have a more detailed plan than I actually could find. New London Turnpike, high volume, unsignaled at Green Bush Road and numerous side streets. The application tool known as comprehensive permit, where the applicant must provide a minimum of 25% affordable units in exchange for the ability to seek adjustments and waivers from the town zoning codes and subdivision regulations. The ultimate decision-making for this project is you people, the Coventry Planning Committee. This development, Village at Tyo, is proposed to connect to below-quality roads. Again, there is three major land developments near the New London Turnpike and Arnold Road area, each of which are using a current traffic study, a total of over 900 units. The total of the Village at Tyo, Arnold Road 666, and the commercial and residential at the corner of New London Turnpike and Arnold Road would total in excess of 900 units. The facts of construction traffic damage, traffic in the general area, noise, air quality, water runoff to the lake, protecting nature, protecting wildlife, and overall quality of life. I ask this commission to take into account the whole picture, not just a snapshot of this one application. This is, this is offering a minimum of 24, 25% affordable units for adjustments and waivers. I find it hard that in, in the paper, it says you guys have the total control of this, not zoning, not the conservation committee. Is that? I know you probably don't even want to answer, but shouldn't this all be considered for the quality of life to us taxpaying residents, especially the premium taxpaying residents that are right on the lake? I thank you for your time and consideration, Ms. Pularnery Pan.
Thank you. I just want to comment quickly. You know, a few years ago, we, we had a part-time engineer. And I just want to do kudos to our staff. The town council has appropriated money for the manager to conform a tremendous staff that, I've been around 19 years on this board. We had a part-time engineer, four hours. We have an engineer and an engineer techno. We have a planner, we have a principal planner. This staff is equipped to do these big projects, and I just want to thank them because all this comes from them. Thank you. Anybody else in the center? Come on up there, right here in the black.
Jean McMahon, 33 Harrington Road Coventry. I only have three things to say, though I had a whole bunch of questions on here. Some of them were answered, some of them I really don't want to get into right now. But, so these are my thoughts, I will say. I don't feel that our infrastructure can accept all these buildings, and certainly not our roads for police, fire, rescue, not our schools, or our lake. I feel everyone involved has not thoroughly thought this through. They're thinking about today only, not about our tomorrows. And I also feel it's all about making money, not at all about the taxpayers who have been loyal and paid their taxes all these years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? I saw somebody up in the back. I'll get to you in front, I'm working my way down. I didn't forget you.
Hi, my name's Christine Ferris. I live at 3 Ferris Drive. My father was Donald Ferris at 5 Ferris Drive, and I know he's been in front of this council probably once or twice. He's 84, so he couldn't make it tonight. My grandfather, he, well, my family's been at that address since 1928 and 1930. So we've been paying taxes on the lake a good long time. And my grandfather started the Tyo Lake Association with some of his friends to protect and preserve the water. So having a long history on that side of the lake, we're just down the street from Tyo School. We were there before anything was built. And the three previous developers that have come in and made promises, Assalone, Bamford, and I forget who built the Oaks, who did the Oaks, all three of them did a pretty crummy job, as far as we're concerned, because of the problems that were manifested after they built and left, mostly drainage, which has been something you all know about a lot. The school traffic is horrendous. The traffic report that was generated doesn't take into account all of the cars coming down Rawlinson Drive and coming to East Shore to get to the school. It's a real problem. If you put in all these units, which is way too many, there's going to be a lot of kids. So parents drive them to school, where are they going to park? Where are they going to, you know, what are they going to do? It's not, this is not factored in. This is not a good plan. I guess really, I'm just really concerned about the flooding. That's really my main concern, cutting down all the-- That's really my main concern, cutting down all the trees, that those oak, those giant oaks hold hundreds of gallons of water, and when you're taking out 10,000 trees, that's a lot of trees. So where's the water going to go? It's just a concern that I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the middle in the back? Come on up. I'm going to take her first, and then I'll take you next.
I'm off to the side.
Hi, Debbie McAllister, 52, Tiffany Road. I just want to thank you for your time tonight, and I, a lot of my questions were answered, but I do have a few questions, actually one specific question, and I did have a lot of questions, but everybody else mentioned them tonight, so I don't want to take any more time than needed. So with the runoff going into Tyogue Lake, if the HOA doesn't maintain these systems and for some reason the systems fail, and contaminants get into the lake and it gets polluted, who's responsible for the lake cleanup? The town? Or will the HOA be responsible? Will they have to carry a specific insurance policy, you know, in case they do pollute it because this is their water? Who's going to cover that? That was my question, and the other comment I had is, when the first lady spoke on East Shore Drive and they had an HOA, and they said that they were having problems with it, and you had said that this isn't the time to address it. Where are we going to be five years from now with this project if the HOA isn't working and it does get dissolved? This is kind of a pivotal moment with an HSA and HOA, because if it's not working for the previous development, it may not be working for this one as well, so that's just something I, I ask you to consider too. Thank you.
Come on up there.
Good evening, I'm Cassie Wilcox, I live at 72 Tiffany, Cassie, C-A-S-S-I-E, Wilcox, at 72 Tiffany Road. I think a lot of great points have been made and covered tonight, a few that I wanted to bring up. So I've been a resident in Coventry for five and a half years. Prior to that, I lived in a town, probably somewhere between West Warwick and Central Falls type of area, in a high-density living situation, there were 550 units and seven different HOAs. And it's a disaster. It's compounding every time you add a new development, a new HOA. It's, it's just not something that is sustainable. When you live in these high-density types of areas, people take to the community open spaces. So I agree with the other developer that spoke to the fact that there's been no mention of what those spaces are going to look like. And if there is no open space for these residents to, to fill, they're going to take to the other areas of, of the town. And in that case, we have a really big safety hazard, because there are very minimal sidewalks throughout the, the developments, the roads leading out to areas like center of New England, where many probably lower income or folks that can't afford a vehicle are going to need to get to to shop. They're going to be walking on these teeny tiny roads that are a, a safety hazard. I, I think many people in this room know me as the girl that walks the lake, because I do, I take a five mile loop, and there's not a single sidewalk for me to walk on. And it's just going to be compounded again with all of these extra folks and bodies walking along the streets. There's also limited access to public transit. We haven't thought through how we're going to allow this infrastructure to support our community. And I think it's not a question of if, if the drainage system's going to fail, but when? This developer has proven that he's unable to put together developments that are going to meet this, the standards that he's, you know, sharing with his buyers. We have to be prepared for that. I already have a backyard that floods on the lake every single year. And if I now have to worry about all this extra drainage coming into my yard and my neighbors have to worry about that extra drainage, it's just not fair. I pay over $15,000 in taxes a year to live on a lake that's going to flood, I'm out. And we have to be prepared for that. Are we willing to lose the integrity of what Coventry is today for these issues so that a developer can make a couple million dollars? It's not fair. Our town is already tapped with resources. I have weeks where my trash doesn't get picked up. I have to get my tires replaced every other couple of months, just because their roads aren't paved. How can we really support over 500 additional people and 300 more cars coming into this teeny tiny area? We have to be realistic about what our city and our town can support. And I know you mentioned you, you want to focus on just the, the village at Tyogue, but we have to look at the big picture. We're putting in another 700 unit system across the street, across the center of New England. And it's, we just have to think about the impact that all of these efforts are going to have on the traffic. We can't look at it in a vacuum, it's just not realistic. Again, these are just really great plans, I think, that we saw from the engineers, but it, it's hard to trust their assessment and, and their plans when they're just going to throw all the blame on the HOA and say, well, it's not our problem anymore, they're going to handle it. And I have to ask you as the board, are you prepared to fill in the gaps when that HOA fails and when the system fails? Because it's going to fall on you. And that's where we really need you all to step up and be our representatives and show that this is a terrible, terrible idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. Did I miss anybody in the back? It's very hard to see, but I'll get, I'll get to you. Come on up.
Hi, Donna Johnson, 29, Lemus Street, Coventry. So I don't know, I'm really concerned about the traffic and the safety. At least three or four days a week, I walk out of my home on Lemus Street, I walk to New London Turnpike, and I go right on Angus Street, all the way to, out to the back road, their old North Road to Tiffany, to the end of Tiffany, and I come back to Tiffany, to New London Turnpike. We do the side roads and come back to Lemus Street. And I just, and I'm also a bicycle rider, and I'm just wondering about the safety and, because there is going to be more traffic, there aren't going to be sidewalks, and it is difficult coming out of Green Bush Road for anybody who's coming up Route 2. Right now, we have to wait for traffic going by quite a bit more. I grew up in Coventry, to my fact, I grew up on New London Turnpike. And, you know, I've seen a lot of development, and I just think it's going to bring way too much traffic and not enough safety for those of us who utilize the neighborhood resources. Right now, it's a beautiful walk, but I sometimes wonder if we're going to end up like Warwick. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Come on up, you've been waiting for a while.
Okay, my name is John Palmer, I live at 4 Bonnie Street. I'm just outside on the main drag of Route 3. I've lived there for 30 years. I've seen a lot of different traffic where that intersection of Old North Road used to be that triangle fork. It was a great idea to make it a T-intersection, I guess, depending on which way you're looking at it. I started out on my little napkin of 11 items and poof, I'm only down to four. I could probably bring it right down to three. My one thought was, my house is Bonnie Street to Old North Road intersection of Route 3, will there ever be a light there? Because there's going to be a lot of new traffic. Also, the Mingle Wood, if I understand, this developer, if I'm not sure, and correct me if I am wrong, is he the same developer that did Mingle Wood and Burn Street Road and all that? Did they tell that all these people that bought those houses that they were going to put these new houses right behind them? Because if that was my house and I just bought it, I would be so furious. It's just a, it's just a thought. Another one is, I'm in construction, I've been in construction for 40 years, I know I don't look it, but, um, commercial construction, and the traffic, and I thank the town for going around and re-asphalting a lot of neighborhoods. It looks beautiful, they've turned into racetracks, but it, it really increased our value of the homes in those areas, all these new resurfaced asphalted neighborhood roads, beautiful, very beautiful. But now that these heavy trucks are going to come in and construction, I know construction, your 18-wheelers, your concrete trucks, those are going to get torn up, they will. We're going to be redoing them, they're going to be rough, they're going to be, they're going to be ruined, it is no doubt. And like I said, being there, you know, I'm all for construction, but I just really hope, and I do hope, in, in the panel here and everybody behind you, behind you, behind you, really do take a look at the new proposed development, regardless if it's 50 homes, 100 homes, or 200 homes, or the new development across from there, like the young lady you mentioned. The only weird question I had in my head in the drawings, because I can read drawings, I'm very, I can see drawings, what doesn't show up there for the general public, and I could be one of the general public if I take off my construction hat, because I own a home, is, yes, the neighborhood that they're creating for the village, you've got, I want to call small, medium, and large, income, small income, medium income, and high income. On those nice drawings, it doesn't really show where the financial rate of each groups are. It seems like there's the poor section in the front, the middle section, and then the ritzy over there at Tiffany, you know? I don't know if, if people are grasping that, but the front end, again, I've lived poor life, I've lived a modest life, because I do work hard, and I'm exposed to all kinds of people. And I just want to make sure that for, for all these people, is there going to be a good streetlights? Is there going to be good for darkness? Is there going to be sidewalks for these kids? Is there going to be, are you, is there going to be somebody, whatever convention division going to put a new bus stop for public transit? I'm all for public transit if, if people don't have vehicles. I have a wife and two kids. At one time, I had five vehicles in my driveway. And I'll tell you one thing right now, everybody in New England, they do not have garages, they have sheds. Nobody parks a car in their garage unless you've got the Mustang or the Corvette. I have five cars, you know where they are? They're on my grass. I had to put another drive-in because my each kid drove a car. Nobody has one car anymore. Now we got two kids and a wife. I had five cars. I got four motorcycles. I got a boat. I got three trailers. So people don't use their garages, so that's a fallacy. They're, they're sheds. And nowadays, they're not even a shed anymore, they close them off and make them an in-law apartment. So that garage is really kind of like BS. And just one more thing, God, I, I lost my notes here in thought, but other than that, I just really hope, and I do trust, I mean, I've got friends up here, I'm not even going to pull them out, but I know you're going to do the best in your best interests, and we are for development, but just make sure we are hopefully in the best interest of Coventry, because I'm not moving. I'm going to die in Coventry, I grew up in North Kingstown. I raised my family from birth baby to college. I got a daughter that's doing her PhD, and I've got a son that's a policeman. So I'm all aware, plus in construction, I love construction, I love building. But at least, if we trust the developer, I want to make sure I trust you guys first in our heart of hearts, everybody here. If we don't oppose it, at least really, really look into it, and I know you guys are, that's why you're there. You are representing us, and if anything, you all should be running for council and everything else in between, not just what your seating is right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Piece of paper.
Name an address, please.
Jerry Narcoitz, 21 Beach Street, Coventry, Rhode Island. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm the president of the Lake Association, been it for 15 years. Been the keeper of the gate. I control the level, so when the level goes up, I have a lot of friends when we want it high, I have a lot of enemies when the lake goes down, and I have to live with trying to keep everybody as happy as I can. We have a lot of concerns about this development. I wrote down a few of them, a lot of them have been covered a little bit, but I, I want to go through them just so that they're on the record of the Lake Association being very concerned about it. The development is extremely close to Lake Tyogue. It actually is, the, the buffer is either right next to it or a part of it where the drainage comes out of the large detention basin. I know they're going to use best management practices, but I wonder if it's going to take care of suspended solids, if it's going to take care of nitrates, if it's going to take care of phosphates, if it's going to take care of oil distillates. I worry about all those things affecting the lake. Like it was said earlier, we've had a really rough year with E. coli or, or Endor Kaki, I struggle with saying that word, and we've had blue-green algae, but a lot of lakes have had that too, it's not just ours. It, it for sure will not help the lake with this development unless it's taken care of extremely well. It's rare for a developer or a town to maintain their drainage systems as the years go forward. So take that where it comes from, that's the history of, of drainage systems. The density is so great around this thing, it will definitely change traffic patterns and community. There's no question about that. Existing roads in the area will struggle to accommodate traffic, many of the roads are substandard. Tiffany Road and East Shore Road by Lake Taco Restaurant, that curve there, I don't even want to think about how that's going to be with a lot of traffic on it. Buffer zones, I didn't hear much about buffer zones. I, I have no idea what, what they're doing, I'm hoping there's going to be a grand buffer zone, at least from a lot of areas. After last night hearing the town council meeting on, on Helen Avenue, it was pretty scary to hear how that buffer zone went away, and there's nobody doing anything about that. Or no matter how the town manager's trying, he is striking out, and I can see that happening in other developments. The drainage design has been talked all night long, I don't really think I need to go into that. You should be extremely concerned about it. There are drainage problems all over that area, all along Lake Tyogue, and more of this is going to come from this development, probably no matter how they do it. I know they talk about a 100-year storm design. Usually that's to control flow to be under 100 years, but you get, end up with more water, how could you not? You've got more impervious area, so there has to be more overall flow. And the last thing, and it's really kind of a pet peeve, is that the sewer pipes on this project are going to serve this project, but there are budding roads that might want to attach, i.e. Tiffany Road down on the bottom by Lake Tyogue, by, by Lake Ty, Ty Oak. Those areas should want to attach to the sewer. But if the pipe installed in the road in development three is not adequate for that attachment, it won't matter, they won't be able to attach. So making or helping or having the developer put a sewer pipe that meets the capacity of those dwellings seems to be a simple request and requirement. And I think that's about it that I have for you guys. I really appreciate the effort you all put in, and I know this is a really difficult job. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to take a few more tonight, I mean, we're getting towards 20 minutes or 10. So I'm going to take care of you, yep, sorry. Red Coat. I'm not wrapping it up yet, I'm just saying we're getting to that point, but we will continue the public hearing, there will be another meeting.
Linda Blaze, 148 Tyogue Avenue. I'd like to address the traffic and the data that was presented. You alluded that 10 years, it hasn't changed much. I've lived at my address for 41 years, I am quite seasoned to what that traffic is. Getting out of my driveway is horrendous. There's no light to even slow down that traffic pattern from way up near Arnold Road to West Warwick. As far as accidents, I've seen cars slip, I've seen them hydroplane into rocks, I've seen many rear-end accidents. So yeah, there are several. And drainage, he's going And drainage, he's going to put some of the drainage onto Ty Oak Avenue. Where's that water going to be captured? There's one drainage outlet right next door to me, and maybe one across the street. Ty Oak Avenue has had where it's gotten broken down areas. So now the state is going to have to fix that. And the line that goes, he was a deer in the headlights when asked if he got whatever he needed from West Warwick. Does Assalone still own that line? And the one seventy-six, he came in through a back door beginning of twenty twenty-five, where he didn't have to have the preliminaries, and he got a plus five. So twenty-five of those units are add-ons. You're going to have low income, and he's going to put those up front and then go down the line. And those are going to be rentals. So you're not going to get anything out as far as the HOA or any of that revenue. The water, the sediments, everything that's going to go in and what they're going to have to maintain, we all know that that's not going to be done. I walk in my yard forty-one years. My yard's pretty wet nowadays. It wasn't forty-one years ago. I know we've gotten more rain, but I really think it's an adverse effect of that's already started from wall spread and going down. So you're not only affecting the people before, but the people after. And as far as going through onto Angus and coming out all Noah Road, it's going to be horrendous. And you are going to see a lot more accidents. I put my garbage down at night. It's tonight or in the morning, and I have to peek and wait until I feel safe to go and put it on the road. That's how fast and how many cars come down. So as far as what he speculated, and I believe you alluded to some of the data was back to two thousand and fifteen, that's a ten-year gap. They better tighten that up a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the middle section? Did I miss anybody in the middle section? That hasn't spoke yet. Come on up, sir. Sorry I missed you.
My name's Mark Hardy, and I'm at sixty Tiffany Road. Hardy, H-A-R-D-Y. So I won't belabor the points that people have made. They've made great points. I concur with almost all of them. I will simply try to just add to it and be brief since it's late. I live on Tiffany Road. I see the map behind you, and I take exception to some of the traffic studies. That intersection there at Trafford Park and Tiffany Road is a blind intersection. You're coming down a steep hill, and there's a grade on your right. You can't see around that corner. Worse than that is the the intersection at Old North and the Tiffany Road Annex. That's a complete blind intersection right there. Inability to widen that and make more clear sightlines. I know there hasn't been accidents, but there have been several times where I've swerved, frankly. So that is a very difficult intersection. To drive that up from the current ten or fifteen people on Tiffany Road to sixty, possibly a hundred and twenty going down there, I think you're setting yourself up for a real bad safety issue. Also, I looked into the deeds briefly. The town GIS does not show that section Tiffany Road from, it shows that that is Town Road, the section of Tiffany Road right up to where the proposed entrance is from Trafford Park to there. I urge you to get proof as to who owns it. I'm not so sure it's clear that the owner of this project has clear right-of-way to that area, so I would make sure I got written proof to that. It's bad enough if they want to increase that road by eight feet, because it's sixteen feet there. And I don't believe those residents should feel that burden of another eight feet of their property lost and well as increased traffic. And my final point is, I like to reiterate what Jerry said. I'm part of the Lake Association also. It's different when you dump water into a tributary such as Flat Top Pond or the Potoxit. It goes there and it goes away. You put it into Lake Ty Oak, and it's there for days. Lake turnover is not nearly as strong as it is in those tributaries. So if you're putting landscaping chemicals in there, and I did read that they want professional landscaping at least twice a year, that's a bunch of nitrates going in, a bunch of phosphates going in, and they're going in and they're sticking around. In addition, any salt, any anything, I was frankly very surprised that they want to dump routinely into Lake Ty Oak. By exception is one thing, by routine is entirely another. So I believe DEM should be monitoring that much more closely, and I believe it needs to be clear that it's more of a routine discharge to it. The final point isn't directly on this, but I just kind of want to summarize this a little bit for you. I looked into the census for twenty twenty. There's fourteen thousand nine hundred housing units in Coventry. And if you go back to twenty ten, there was an increase from twenty ten to twenty twenty of about five percent. Five projects, Willow Lakes, New London Preserve, Coventry Center, Compton Meadows, and Lake Ty Oak, seven hundred and sixty-eight units. That represents a five percent increase in about a year. That's far too much, and I understand the legal framework that you're under in pushing back on these projects is extremely difficult at the state level. I get that. There's legal fees involved. There's recapture of the client's legal fees. It's difficult. I get it. But it might be time, based on what you're looking at, to go to the town council and start to muster up something to the State House and say, we need some relief from this. We need some sort of moratorium. When they first put this law out, there was a moratorium for at least a year because there was going to be a land rush. That's what they thought, and they said, oh, maybe it isn't that bad. Well, here we are in the land rush, and you guys are absolutely overwhelmed, and I feel for you. You guys have done a good job. We're late here tonight. You're paying very close attention to me, and I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody, did I miss anybody in the center? Anybody on the right side would like to come up. I'm going to start from the back. Come on up. You'll be next. Nope, her first, and you can come up.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Thompson. I'm an attorney representing Coventry Housing Authority, and more specifically, most concerns dealing with the North Road Terrace property. And I just wanted to reiterate the drainage issues that have been spoken to ad nauseam this evening, but my client's property is specifically affected by the drainage issues. Ever since the clearing has begun with respect to this project or this development, there have been overwhelming drainage issues on the property, including having to have thirty-six residents evacuated from the property. There are sandbags that are still on the property today. It is something that is very concerning, and while the applicant is working with us to attempt to address some of those issues, we just want to make sure it is very clear to both the town and the applicant that unless the drainage issues are dealt with correctly, that this is most likely going to be a disastrous effect on the abutting properties, especially the Coventry Housing Authority property at North Road Terrace. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen. Kathleen Cleary, seventy-four Tiffany Road, Coventry. All right, to several issues. The first is the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five sent a letter to Mr. DeBois saying the DM freshwater wetlands program is unable to complete the review of their application. So there were a lot of issues that were brought up in the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, and they were not able to give approval of it, so they should be working to address all the issues on this. I don't know if you have a copy of this. I did get this off of the Rhode Island website tonight before I came here. So that's one thing that you need to do, and it does address the culverts, the drainage, all of that stuff. The next thing is, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, the planning commission may deny any application for a comprehensive permit if the town has an approved affordable housing plan and is meeting the housing plan needs. The proposal is inconsistent with the affordable housing plan, provided that the local review board also finds that their municipality has made significant progress in implementing that housing plan. Is there a housing plan being worked on by the town of Coventry so they can deny this project? The next is traffic. Everyone's talked about traffic. The area of Coventry has the highest density. It is absolutely ridiculous to put sixty-one units in a small area, regardless, as everyone said, and then to say that there's only going to be forty-three cars leaving the area in the morning and fifty-seven coming back. Where the heck does that come from when you have sixty-one units? Bogus, 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 bogus. Bald Eagle Protection Act. We have bald eagles in Coventry, and the Bald Eagle Protection Act of nineteen forty protects the trees and the forest. You cannot destroy a bald eagle's habitat. So all of these trees that are going to be cut down, an immediate cease and desist needs to be done on any deforestation within this property. And here's the Protection Act information if you want that. So in regard to congestion, open spaces, the Realtor initially stated that we only talk about open spaces when we get into a congestion. This is congested. This is what's called the rat syndrome. You put a lot of people together in a particular area, and all psychologists will tell you, people become violent. It is a rat syndrome, and you're turning a very nice area into a rat syndrome. Lastly, how are they going to pump the water to Tiffany Lake? How are they doing that? Are they going to run a pipe from whatever area to the lake? Through whose property? Whose easement? How are they going to do that? Have they discussed how they're going to do that? There's a lot of wetlands on Tiffany once you get past Trafford or whatever it is. So how is all that going to be done? There are a lot of questions that need to be answered, and you just need to drag this out or drop it altogether. That's all I have to say for now.
Thank you. You want to turn that in, those records into our staff? To put them on the record, you certainly can.
Okay.
Anybody else on this side? Come on up, sir.
Mark Lamoy, thirty-four, Island Drive, Coventry. So I also have a lot of concerns about drainage, not only towards the Ty Oak Lake direction, but nobody's really talked about going towards Route Three. So I think I heard it correctly tonight by the engineer saying that the cul-de-sac that is closest to Route Three doesn't have, and I think one of you asked the question, doesn't have any catch basins or anything, that the water was going to be diverted to Route Three. Coming down Ty Oak Avenue from the top of the hill, Nicky's, down towards West Warwick, during heavy rainstorms, that is a river. So I own a property on Gillis Street, which is almost directly across from this proposed new development. And for thirty years, we've been having flooding on Gillis Street. The town says it's a state issue because Route Three is a state road. The catch basins get filled up, the state doesn't maintain them properly. The town has been gracious enough to give me sandbags. I've had sandbags on my property in my backyard for ten years. If I don't have them around my backyard, my back of my house, my basement floods. My basement has flooded over a hundred times. The water coming down Route Three, the water takes a path of least resistance. It comes down Route Three, and it takes a left turn onto Gillis Street. That, the problem was exacerbated. I know you have to focus on only this project, but the problem of the flooding on Gillis Street has been exacerbated when, a little bit when Paul Sprague Drive went in, and noticed a considerable difference when East Shore, the Oaks, went in. I just don't see, so I'm sure during the Oaks project and these other projects that experts come up and testify that they're putting in the proper drainage, but it didn't work, and we're not learning from history. So I'm concerned that the Route Three, the water coming down, because during heavy rainstorms, it is a river. Also, the, I want to, my mother-in-law lives in that elderly housing complex. It's the Coventry Housing Authority. And those buildings have to be forty-plus years old, been there, never once a flood. The Oaks project goes in, we get a call at three thirty in the morning from my mother-in-law. Half a foot of water, as the attorney stated, thirty-six people displaced, had to go find somewhere else to live. That problem exists today. If you pull into that plat and into the Coventry Housing Authority, one of the major parking lots in our housing authority is still closed off. I think it's almost been almost two years now. During rainstorms, I've been there, during rainstorms, they have all sandbags, and it just diverts the water away. There's no plan in place to remediate or to fix our problem, and I'm just very concerned that this project is going to do what the previous project did and add to drainage issues. So I hope you take that into consideration too, not just the drainage going towards Ty Oak Lake, which is a major concern, but also going towards Route Three. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on this side? I'm going to take a couple more tonight if there's any. I don't see any. Doug, do we have a specific date?
So a few comments, before we consider whether all the public comments have been taken, I know that there's folks on Zoom. However, I defer to the board. If, there's a few things that probably are wise to get some specific feedback from the board on tonight.
Yeah, I wanted to get through public hearing, but yes.
Yeah, and so I don't know how long it may take. I think that the last we saw, there was twenty-ish people on Zoom. Cody, do you have a number on that right now? Seventeen on Zoom. That could add time. I defer to the board if you want to finish the comment through Zoom, but I do think you should save at minimum ten minutes of time to get some specific feedback from you on some of the outstanding issues, some things that we're going to want feedback on before you make any motions to continue on the application.
Sounds good. I'm going to take a five-minute break. Before we do that. Thank you. To continue. Where's Glenn? No, we're not ready yet. Here he comes. Okay, I just want to say one thing. The the public hearing is going to be continued. I know I didn't get to everybody on Zoom. But we're going to continue this to, I believe, is it December eighteenth, Doug? All right, well, just want to, the applicant wants to to address a couple of things. I know between two and three, what we want to do with that?
Oh, yes. Yeah, that's one of them.
I think you're good, actually.
My, I can yell, too.
I I think it's consistent that we're going to go by what everybody has said in the TRC and and connect two and three. I think it's good planning and it's certainly a safety hazard to keep it the way it is.
Okay, one thing down. The waivers. So submission waivers, not the variances, the submission waivers, so we can get this project certified complete. So the first two are waivers for items, and if you have in front of you my November tenth letter, it's in the, it should be in the bound page, what page is this? Two, it starts with the list and the reasons. So the first two waivers are are just to provide these items at some point later before you vote. These are location of permanent bounds and corner markers. And there's a related adjustment request as to how far apart those are, but we're not dealing with those tonight. And requirements for proposed improvements, street slots, setback lines, curb cuts, lot areas and dimensions. I don't think we're yet at that point of what this looks like. We'll put a plan connecting the roads. So we're just saying, let's not do this a bunch of times, showing that stuff on the configuration now. Let's get more feedback from the board and then give it to you. Those are those two. The third one is the one we talked about open space. It's not an actual requirement. We're more than happy to provide a plan. I don't think that's for the same reasons now. We need to know exactly how much open space we're going to have based on what this configuration is. So same rationale. And then the last one is identifying the trees over fifty years old, and that's on page three. That's a full submission waiver. So there's four of them.
Okay. Staff, have any input on the waivers that they've requested? I mean, two and three to me is a is a no brainer. We're going to connect those two. The option is, is it going to be public or is it going to be private? I know, number one, I would like to keep private. That's a rental. Two and three, I don't really have a concern one way or the other, but I think if it's public, I think Mr. McGee got to have a lot more input on this. Where are you going to put the snow? I mean, there's a lot of different things. If it stays private, I don't know where staff is 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 heading on this.
And I don't, I don't, I think we were waiting to see what the connection was to get that further feedback from DPW and stuff, which we can do between now and.
Yeah, I think if it's going to be public, I think Kevin McGee has a big role in this because he's going to be maintaining it.
Yeah.
If it's private, then that's totally different.
Yep.
Yeah, I do think any change made to the site plan and any change on a technical basis. My first thought is all of that should be given back to the town.
The DRC.
So that it can go to TRC, that can go through TRC report for your benefit at a future meeting. So I would request that we get the whatever changes they're going to make and whatever commitments or direction the applicant wants to go for public or private, give us the what they're looking to propose, and then the TRC will react, and then you'll have the ability to react. On the, for the, for those waivers, that's, I do think we're eventually heading up to a place where we do want to understand public improvements as part of this stage of application. So if you wish to give the waiver on improvements and knowledge of improvements, you can, but my thought is we may be in a position in a month to have better clarity on those improvements so that you could consider it then.
I would rather do the the connectivity between two and three and then then go over to the the COMCOM and give them the okay to to give their thoughts on this.
I do agree. I think there is a, there is a request from the Chair of the Conservation Commission to send a consideration of an advisory opinion that you would give them that. I do, I would like that to be in a motion, so if the the board can certainly weigh in. But if that's of the mind, I think that getting that done tonight is helpful because it means that you'll have that feedback sooner. We don't often do those advisory opinions, but this is a, we certainly know this is a more complex project. It's near the lake. And this will be with us for at least another meeting, so there's not any issues with timing consideration.
Yeah, well, I'll ask for that motion when we're when we're continuing. We can add that to the motion.
And then the other waivers, it's the discretion of the board. I would suggest if there's not an open space plan, we at least want direction from the applicant on what their intent is for the the protective measures of what will be in those open space buffer areas. We'd need, we need some content to suggest what is the open space area going to protect, what, how are they going to treat that? If it's not a full fledged plan, we need the beginnings of it so that we understand it at this stage with the board before it goes to final plan and staff are reacting to it solely. For the, for the trees, I'll defer to the board. Staff didn't have an outstanding concern on the fifty year old trees, but I'll defer to the board on on that issue.
And on those first couple waivers, we're just kind of going back in time to when we submitted this application. Just all you're saying is we're not requiring at submission, we can get certified complete, but at some point in the process, you would like to see that information.
Yes.
That's, that's just the request.
I I'd like to see at least a delineation between wherever these I asked a question tonight, who's getting the cemetery? Where's, where are the, where are the association lines? And what are the setbacks of some of these dwellings from the roadways? And is that going to change if these end up to be town roadways? Twenty-four feet may not be, may not be suitable anymore. So I think a lot of that is going to impact the overall project, and we haven't even gotten into density. And I, the one thing, Tiffany Road, we're going to do the best we can. I I don't, I don't think that's, I'd like to know what you can do based on survey data that's out there and if it's not readily available. You got to find out what's the towns, do they own it? How wide is it? And how much can you offer to improve? You know, reasonably. But not, when we get out there, we'll do the best we can. That that might not work. I don't, I just don't want to see a problem. I I know folks are going to be using that Trafford Park to get into that into that subdivision. And it's unfortunate that we can't have connectivity with the pedestrian sidewalk. But I don't think that's wide enough, but certainly we want two travelings to accommodate the traffic. And then we got the questions from all the folks that were here, but you wrote those down and those will come up at the next meeting. I know there were a lot of them, but some of them I hadn't thought of before, so it would be helpful to get.
Yeah, we'll get, we're going to get a full response written, so you guys can see it ahead of time.
Thank you.
I do have a concern too with the roads, you know, you're putting this new road, so granted, these, you know, there's going to be what, a hundred and something, a hundred and fifty, maybe seventy-six, some people happy because they get a new home, but it's not affecting everyone in a positive way, right? Because we're putting a new neighborhood in. So the houses that are there, like on Tiffany Road, that road's going to come out, so where people never had headlights in their, in their living room, you know, for the last lifetime, all of a sudden, they're going to be whacked with headlights coming out of Tiffany, well, the new development out of Tiffany Road, and maybe even on Minglewood. I don't know if there's concessions that can be done to design a road, maybe this is further down the line, I'm sorry, but to design the road so there's not hitting one house specifically, but in between, or maybe concessions where shrubbery could be added to somebody's yard if they want it.
That's a good point.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a lot of houses being affected by the roads coming in and out.
Okay. I think you do need a vote on the waivers, though. I'll defer to Mr. Attorney Igliozy, but I think they might need to vote on the waivers.
I I think you're right, and I think they should vote on the waivers. I think they should decide each one to being, because they have an impact on whether you're going to get the information at final or at some point during preliminary or at all. So I think they need to be, you should address them. So, and again, also has an impact on the the clock. Because if certification becomes complete as a result of the waivers you give, the clock starts.
Yeah, and we, they are in the staff report, they're in our cover letter, and then they're also in that November tenth letter from me.
I would just take one at a time, this four, right?
Okay, yeah, we we refer to four. I see submission waivers, preliminary plan checklist.
Yes.
And then under that, there's an A, B, and C. And and A has two.
Eight.
One's the location of proposed permanent bounds and corner markers, if applicable. So I assume that is just for the outline of not each individual lot, but the three.
I think it's everything.
All the lots?
Yeah.
And only one subdivision has lots? And the reason you're not showing those now is because if the number of lots change or the road configuration changes, you don't want to have to show those. And and when would you plan to submit those?
Before this, before this stage is over. So the first two waivers, we're just proposing to give you not back in time at September fifteenth, but at some point.
Some point before we vote.
Correct.
Preliminary plan approval.
Yes.
Okay, and number thirty-nine would be the same one, and we already just talked about that, and you're going to do your best to try to get those things on there for thirty-nine, which is street slots, lot lines, setback lines. Again, you're only asking for the waiver, and so it's on the plan before we vote.
Correct.
So we will get it prior to the vote on the preliminary plan stage.
Yes.
And B, the applicant asked for submission of the following to be determined at final plan, open space plan.
Again, that one's not necessarily required. I think there's what the planner asked for is what we plan on doing. That's fine. I mean, at final, we have to give restrict, whatever the restrictive covenants are and all that stuff on it.
So it'll be a waiver to final, provided that prior to the vote on the preliminary plan, we'll have a conceptual.
Yes.
Okay. And location of existing wooded areas, notation of existing ground cover and trees over fifty years old.
Yeah, it's just the, we show on existing conditions. It's just the tree, trees over fifty years old is the waiver.
All right, and is that all? Did I just announce, was that all four? Because A had two.
Yep, that's the last one.
And C had four, okay.
That sound good? That's the one we're going to review now, right? We're going to go over the waivers.
Yeah, yeah, those are the ones we just had. Yep, if we want to discuss and vote each one.
Discuss those waivers?
I can make motions and then we can do it under discussion. You want to do it that way?
Yeah.
Okay.
Why don't you make the motion on the waivers?
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to, and I'm going to take them individually, to approve, I'm sorry, to to waive the requirement that number thirty-five, the location of permanent bounds and corner markers, be provided prior to the preliminary application. But rather be provided prior to the final point, preliminary plan that we will be voting on.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Clooney and I have a second by Mr. Kenny. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, similarly, I would like to make a motion to waive the requirement that all of the improvements, including streets, lots and lot lines, setback lines and curb cuts, identified as number thirty-nine, together with the lot areas and dimensions, not be required at the preliminary plan application, but rather be shown on the final plan prior to the vote, final preliminary plan.
Okay, I have a motion on number thirty-nine from Mr. Clooney. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I would like to make a motion that checklist item forty-nine, the open space plan, residential cluster developments or residential compounds, including the location, dimension and area of any land proposed to be set aside as open space or dedicated to the town, or be the lieu of land. And I'll, I'll add any conservation or or buffer areas with the proposed maintenance elements be deferred until final plan, provided, however, that at least a conceptual plan be provided on the preliminary plan prior to the vote.
I have a motion by Mr. Clooney on number forty-nine. I have a second.
I'll second that.
I have a second by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And and one more, right?
Yeah, now, before we do this motion, are you saying you're never going to provide us the the trees over fifty years old?
Correct.
You just want to defer that?
Correct, so, no, that's, that's a complete submission waiver, but the rationale being there's no, no trees of significance that have been identified, and it's a wooded site, so it's a pretty big undertaking.
Well, you've been through the site. You really don't think there's any trees that are over fifty years old, or you're saying in your opinion, they're not significant?
That are the significance. That's from the engineer.
What's the definition of significant?
It's, they said historic significance.
That's number fifteen, correct?
Hmm.
And staff doesn't have any issues with that?
I, sorry, I defer to the commission. It it's a piece of information that it's, we haven't typically received in great detail on many applications. But I defer to the commission on on that one. No outstanding concerns from staff.
Yeah, we waived them in the past on other projects.
And and no one at the TRC brought it up. There haven't been anyone else.
We don't have any comments on that particular item that I'm aware of.
Is this something you want to table for the conservation review? This doesn't fall under that?
You you certainly could. If 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 the board is of the mind, you're going to send this for an advisory opinion to the Conservation Commission, then you certainly could keep that.
I'm getting them involved anyway for for next meeting. I mean, I would like to.
That just, we have to get sort of, we have to get this project certified complete, so I, I'm trying to think of a.
I don't have a problem waiving them. Yeah, no. I don't have an issue waiving them. Anybody else?
What we're waiving is that you're not going to have to identify them and provide us. That doesn't prevent the Conservation Commission from coming forward with new information before the next meeting, which requires us to go back and take a second look. Right?
Right.
It could happen.
Yeah.
It just wait, what it's waiving is, you don't have to get it for us to get your application finalized.
Right, so it's, it's just saying it wasn't a requirement, we're waiving it as a requirement when we submitted.
Yep.
Pretty much.
Okay, okay. I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, then, that we waive number fifteen, which includes the location of existing wooded areas, notation of existing ground cover and any trees over fifty years old, as having to been provided at the time the preliminary application was made.
I have a motion by Mr. Clooney on number fifteen. Second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Through the chair, I'd just like to note that through these votes, what essentially is occurring tonight is we're certifying the application as complete through the votes that you've just made. So the with concurrence with the legal counsel, I believe the clock is starting as of today.
Yes.
Okay.
We've, we've got a lot to get through, so understanding this is the process.
Yeah, a motion on the.
Send the entire packet or?
No, the the comp could give an advisory committee, the COMCOM.
So it's to have them give us one?
Yeah.
West one?
They they're asking us if they could give an advisory.
Oh, okay, I will make a motion to allow the Conservation Commission to provide the planning commission with an advisory opinion if they so choose.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Clooney and I have a second. By Mr. Ray's. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And for the record, the Conservation Commission is meeting December eleventh. They will be able to turn around a review and comments back to you for the next meeting that you'll have on December eighteenth back in this room.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to continue public hearing and make a motion to continue this application to December eighteenth back here in this building.
At six thirty.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to extend public hearing. Next meeting on what?
December eighteen.
December eighteenth.
At six thirty.
At six thirty.
And the, and also the.
Second motion or one motion?
Yeah, the public hearing also needs to be continued. Did you say that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I have a motion by Mr. Anderson. I have a second by Mr. Kenny. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Was it one more motion? Okay.
No, we're not, we didn't adjourn yet.
You could adjourn.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
It is ten twenty-seven.